Good evening, I'd like to call to order the virtual regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council. The date is June 8th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Gutwine.
Here.
Beto.
Here.
Skilling.
Here.
Springsteen.
Here.
Franks.
Here.
Johnson.
I'm here.
Labir. Harrison.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Thank you all very much for taking the time to tune in. Uh, Councilor Labir is not feeling well this evening, so we wish him the best as we move into our, our night tonight. For those of you who'd like to participate tonight, public comment or um, any comments on the proposed ordinances, the phone number is 1-346-248-7799. That web ID is 990-7302-4331 pound. And then when you'd like to speak, you'll hit star nine and we'll call off the last four of your phone number. We'll have three minutes and I'll interrupt at 10 seconds and let you know that you're running out. And then uh, I will re uh, re-mention that number here as we have these opportunities. So with that, if you please join me in the pledge of allegiance, it'd be great. And we'll remain uh, for a moment of silent prayer. I pledge.
States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. So I want to do two things real quick before we get into item four. I want to address, one is our continuance for an emergency. And um, that'll be, uh, I'd like to move that forward till, to now, so that we have that in place or not in place for the rest of the meeting depending on council. And then the second piece that I would like to mention, and this comes from a lot of feedback from the council as well as the community. And we have items 10 and 11 on the schedule with the idea of them being continued for multiple different reasons, reasons is, that's not a word. So after polling and talking to different folks, I'd like to propose something and I want to do it now because we have folks who want to engage on the phone. And that would be to postpone both 10 and 11 until July 27th, but also include a July, a July 6th study session to review the redline version that was presented by the community for a discussion on July 6th. And I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tem who, uh, Skilling who kind of helped facilitate that copy to maybe speak a little bit more to that.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So we have currently, um, there was, uh, maybe three weeks ago, there was a little over that. There was a red line to the red line, which uh, more or less was a 40 some odd page document that was, had a lot of different comments and proposals that was put together by a resident group. Um, a lot of those proposals sourced from other jurisdictions of some other places. Uh, I did facilitate that to be submitted to the, to the city and the rest of council. And that is uh, under review right now, especially as it pertains to legal. The study session, I think would be important so that we could digest not only that red line, but also I believe, uh, Councilor Gutwine, uh, submitted a red law, or submitted a, a proposed amendment. And there may be others that come as well. And I think it's important with such a, um, a lot of the changes to the ordinance, there's just a lot of language changes that are being proposed. Um, and I think rather than have a regular meeting where we are trying to go through all of that language, which is very dense, I think it would be important to have a study session on the legislation itself. The 101s, as it may be of, of 5G and the wireless technology, there's been a lot of that. We've had that not only at council, Ward 1 did a, a good meeting on that this past weekend. Uh, the counselors Johnson and Abel had, uh, Mr. Goldstein, um, had a, a community member and also had, uh, Mike Whitaker there. Those slides from that are available, or I'm told they can be made available. Um, and that meeting itself, I believe, uh, there will be a link available at some point so that folks can watch that meeting. What I'm interested in doing, and I think what, uh, the mayor was saying as well, is let's look at the actual legislation and get through that language and have a session on that, um, on those proposals. And that way, when we have a second reading on July 27th, some 21 days later, we'll be in a position to, to vote up or down at that point. And I think that would be important to really focus on a lot of these proposals that folks have made. And I think this timeline, uh, is, sets a good balance for that. And Adam, you're muted.
Thank you, I'm muted. Counselor Abel?
Uh, I agree with that, that's a great idea. But I would, uh, referring to Mr. Beto's concern with two computers earlier, being able to keep track of everything, we will have at, I would guess at a minimum, three redline versions because one of the vendors submitted one today. So could we have those redline versions printed out for us? So we don't have to have four computers, uh, around each of our, uh, studios here. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, I know this has taken a long time to get to this, uh, decision. I appreciate it, it's the right thing to do and thank you. Also, perhaps before the study session, maybe staff could meet with some of the folks with, uh, that are concerned about this with broadband Lakewood. And maybe we won't have so many versions and, and adaptations to make it a little easier. Just my input on this. Thank you.
And, and to that point, Counselor Johnson, we have really encouraged the community to send in all of their proposals to the staff for review. And that's kind of how we've gotten to where we are today. Counselor Springsteen?
Well, I, just a couple of questions I would have, uh, at that point. Are, are, are we going to have in-person meetings? Cause there have been concerns about, uh, us not complying with the, um, with the sunshine act with regard to passing ordinances like this of such importance via Zoom? Because I know jurisdictions like, I believe Grand Junction recently has gotten in trouble over doing something like that. So that's one question I would have is, are we going to have a chance for in-person public input uh, at that study session or prior to, um? And then, uh, are we, when we're talking about, we're just talking about the legislation at the study session, I, I guess I would just question whether we maybe could have some kind of brief presentation as well, uh, prior to talking about legislation, just because I think this is such a complicated issue. And, uh, and what I mean by presentation is, uh, something that the citizens can be involved in as well. Um, and I, I, I really appreciate this because up to this point, uh, we have only had input from the industry on what our ordinance is going to be. And in fact, there was a December 13th letter from AT&amp;T in which, uh, Mr. Lombari from AT&amp;T said, "On behalf of AT&amp;T, I would like to thank the city for its facilitation of the wireless facility, citing review and approval process and for including us in your code change process." And so that, that was very concerning to me and a lot of citizens that we had only had industry input in the rewrite of this ordinance. And it has been six months that we've been fighting for this study session now. And I, I am so glad to hear that, that we're finally getting there. Uh, but I just want to make sure that we're covering our bases as far as getting council enough information to make an informed decision here. So thank you.
Yep, thank you, Counselor. And, and certainly I'll let Mr. Cox weigh into the sunshine. I think, um, we can certainly vet that out. And if we don't have that answer tonight, um, I'll also say that we are actually building off of a document that is my understanding came from the community. So this whole process has now taken a turn to where this redline version is from the community. And so we try to work with all stakeholders and, um, certainly continue to build off of that. So, Mr. Cox, are you prepared to weigh in on the question related to the sunshine? And I think you did some, send a memo to all of council explaining, uh, a lot from the Colorado Municipal League. And maybe we need to send that out again. All right. You'll have to unmute, there you go.
All right, I think I got it. It took several tries, but it wouldn't, wouldn't unmute for me. Uh, I'm not specifically prepared to address any, any case law. What I am, uh, you know, um, for, for this evening's purposes, uh, what I am prepared to remind everybody is that we're still under a declaration of emergency. Uh, and those, uh, regulations that we have in our, in our code are designed just for this purpose, precisely because it is difficult to get a, a large, uh, in this case, a fairly large group of people together to make decisions and do it all in, in the right timeframe and do it all in accordance with all of the, uh, procedural requirements. So, uh, there's a, there's a clearer, more vivid example of that coming up later tonight. But, uh, in the meantime, I am confident that we, while we have the power, uh, to meet remotely, uh, under these circumstances, and it's still the right thing to do apparently, um, then, uh, we are able to complete the business of the city in that, in that fashion, even if there are some deviations from the normal course of business. We wouldn't be in an emergency if there weren't those deviations. So, uh, I, I don't think, uh, there's anything in the law that indicates that we can only move things along during a state of emergency. We do have the ability to take action and you've done that on a number of important things uh, during this period of, uh, state of disaster.
And I'll further say to your point, Counselor Springsteen, I don't think anybody knows if we'll be able to be back in person July 6th or July 27th. Um, my bet is we may not be back till the end of the year. We're a large body, right? We're more than 10 people as of ourselves. Some communities are doing a hybrid where half their council comes in and half their council is on Zoom and, and that just gets super clunky. So I can't speak to that, but I do know that, um, we need to continue to move forward. And I kind of presented that last week on these issues. And the community has the opportunity to weigh in via you, to weigh in via Lakewood Speaks, and to weigh in via this platform, and, and that's what we need to continue to do. So I don't see any more questions. So I, I need consensus on the study session portion. Uh, Counselor Gutwine, go ahead.
I, I support moving forward with this plan. Um, I just wanted to raise the possibility of, I wonder if we could do some kind of training session that community members could participate in so that they know how to use this technology? Um, or, uh, you know, I don't know, in case there's been some issues in using it, it is obviously isn't ideal. Um, we want to make it as accessible as possible. Uh, I also, you know, know that our city and cities all across Colorado and all across the country are having to move forward under these circumstances. Um, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Certainly, we're always available to help the community if there's questions. I know, um, I'm just going to say Counselor Franks has offered to, to walk some folks through and certainly I am, and anybody who's tech savvy, we can make that available. And, uh, that's what we've been trying to do, so. So is there consensus to move the study session on the legislation built off of the, uh, redlined version? Then other comments that have come in for July 6th? And to make Kathy happy? We have consensus to move that, so we will now have a study session on July 6th. And then, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, will you please, and Mr. Cox, you may have to weigh in on the, we need to continue both items 10 and 11, can those be done as one?
Uh, yes, I, I believe they could, they are closely related. We could have a motion to continue both items to the date certain.
Well, I'm going to ask for a motion aside, then Counselor Johnson, your hand is up and I'll come to you, okay?
Yes, Mayor, do we need to open the hearing on those items and then make the motion?
You're, you're absolutely right, thank you for that. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please read items 10 and 11 into the record?
Item 10, continued ordinance O-2020-1, amending Lakewood Municipal Code Title 12 and Article 10 of Title 17 to reflect changes in state and federal law relating to wireless services and communications. Item 11, continued resolution 2020-9, establishing certain fees for placement of wireless carrier or small cell facilities within the city of Lakewood Public Way.
Mayor Pro Tem?
On item 10, I move the continuance of ordinance 0-2020-1 to July 27th, 2020.
I second that.
It looks like we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes, and I'm only laughing because I lost my yes vote again. There it is. All right, and that looks like that passes 10 ayes, zero nays. Uh, is that correct? 10 ayes, zero nays, okay? Mayor Pro Tem, Skilling?
And on item 11, I move the continuance of resolution 2020-9 to July 27th, 2020.
I second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Counselor Johnson, your hand is still up, do you want to discuss the motion?
No, that's fine.
Motion and a second on the continuance again, please cast your votes. All right, and that passes 10 ayes, zero nays. Okay, thank you all very much for that.
And I.
Can you unmute, Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry? Thank you.
Yes, um, so we, Counselor Abel asked for printed copies of the different redlines to make it easier to address during the study session on the 6th. I'd like to know, does everyone want us to send them hard copy of the redlines? Or is there anyone, should we just assume that everybody wants printed copies? Is it, let me do it this way, does anybody not want printed copy? Okay, we'll make sure to send printed copies to everyone, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and the second part of the agenda or kind of, um, moving around a little bit is the continuation of the emergency declaration, which this is a two-week check-in for council. Um, we're continuing to have that under the governor's orders. And this continues to allow us to accept monies and have different types of meetings, things along those lines. And the request is to continue for two more weeks. And, um, Counselor Abel, you have your hand up. You have nothing? For some reason, I can't unmute, there you go.
Ah, there we go, now I'm unmuted. I didn't want to interrupt your verbiage, but yes, uh, at some point, uh, as soon as we can. we can, can you give us an idea, uh, Ms. Hudson, of the costs associated with COVID so far and what we're paying for?
Um, yes, I'm happy to do that, and as luck would have it, you're gonna get an overview on the the COVID expenses this evening by Holly, many of which, if not all, most of them can be reimbursed through the CARES dollars. So, but at least you'll see what's been purchased today.
Well, this evening is soon enough. Thank you very much for us.
We aim to please.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem skilling, uh, could you please make that motion for the extension? And that looks like, I don't have my calendar, does that extend to?
June 22nd.
June 22nd?
Yeah, it's in the motion. Uh, I move to extend the declaration of disaster in the City of Lakewood, Colorado, resulting from the coronavirus slash COVID-19 pandemic pursuant to Section 1.27 of the Lakewood Municipal Code, originally declared by proclamation of the Lakewood City Manager on March 17th, 2020, extended by majority vote of the City Council on multiple occasions, and by this motion extended again until June 22nd, 2020, unless earlier extended or terminated by the City Council.
Second.
Right, so we have a, bless you, Counselor Johnson. We have a motion and a second on uh, the extension. Is there any discussion? Counselor Springsteen?
Yeah, and I continue to to just ask to make a record about what precisely the extension is for in, uh, you know, not trying to be difficult in this situation, but just worrying about us making a record that we just continue to ignore. But that that's my thing. Thanks.
So Counselor, and and I would caution with ignoring anything. We have um, the ordinances referenced from the original uh, motion to declare an or an emergency that's based upon our code, and all of that's listed if you'd like another copy of that. So it's not ignoring anything, it's an extension of that, and there's case law, and I can again have that sent if that would suffice. Alright, so we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That passes nine ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Next up, we have public comment. And for those, again, who were uh, looking to weigh in on items 10 and 11, those have been continued, and so that will therefore provide for two more public opportunities to speak. Um, before I go to that, it looks like we have item four. I see Ms. Millard letting me know. So please, item four.
Item four, resolution 2020 dash 21, appointing Laura Kroger to the Metro Wastewater Reclamation District Board of Directors.
Alright, so um, I would just like to say two things. Um, we'd like to welcome Laura. She's a Lakewood resident and works for the Flood District, formerly Metro, oh, now I'm forgetting the name of it, and I serve on the board, the the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, now called the Flood District. So we want to, upon this vote, hopefully it'll pass, welcome her, but also want to thank Mr. Hunter, Mark Hunter, who spent 15 years of service uh, on this Board of Directors and really provided a lot of excellent knowledge as a citizens representative. So Mayor Pro Tem, I will ask you for a motion.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2020 dash 21.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. And that passes 10 ayes, zero nay. Congratulations, Laura, and uh, I know you might have wanted to check in, or maybe you're tuning in, but we're excited to have you and bring your expertise to uh, to this uh, realm here. Now, I can go to public comment, and again, just reiterate to the folks who were looking to testify on items 10 and 11, we will have uh, two more opportunities and really encourage you to engage prior to that. Um, public comment on Zoom, so the phone number, which I'll read again, you'll have three minutes, and when you have 10 seconds left, I will try to wrap you up. And if you um, are ready to speak, you'll press star nine, and uh, the clerk will read off the last four digits of your phone number, and we will ask you to uh, give us your name and address. So that phone number is 346-248-7799. The ID is 990-7302-4331, and then you'll have to hit pound. We ask that you have the same type of decorum that we keep in council chambers, and ask you to direct your comments towards the City Council. Alright, with that, Madam Deputy Clerk?
Call her 8923.
Hello, 8923?
Hello. My name is Joan Poston.
Go ahead, we'll start our three minutes. You are on.
Hello, my name is Joan Poston, and I am here to discuss the resolution that you just extended. I am sorry that you moved it before I had chance for public comment. Um, I would like to say that I think that it is um, a sorry situation that you've decided to extend this. I do not think that there is an emergency anymore. Today I went into King Supers, and they have a sign that says, local face covering ordinance to help keep yourself and others safe, please do not enter without a facial covering. And I need you to know that um, there is no local face covering ordinance. Um, and I reported this to the police because that's fraud, and I talked to the Public Health Department, and they said, oh, well, they can say this, and the governor says we can, and there is a big difference between an ordinance which the city puts into place and a policy which the store puts into place. There is difference in between extending something when you have data that supports that you have an emergency and an original emergency. There is no longer an health order in place. The Jefferson County Public Health Order expired May 8th. They could not extend it because the data was no longer there to extend it. They had to extend it under the hea, the um, Colorado health. There is not going to be an emergency under that any longer, and I sincerely believe there's not an emergency now. You have taken three fourths of the money that you've gotten from COVA to put into the city budget. You have given yourself a 7.7% raise, and I'm beginning to think that this is all a money job, and we're watching a shell job where the money goes here and the money goes there, and there really isn't any emergency at all. I strongly would have suggested you vote no on the extension, and when it comes up again in two weeks, I hope you reconsider this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Salazar?
Call her 3030.
3030, please uh, give us your name and address, and we'll start your time.
Oh.
Hello.
Thank you. Good evening. This is Rick Ash, 400 South Ingle Street. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am deeply disheartened by comments being made by a group of people here in Lakewood. This country was founded on many basic principles, among them, the inalienable right of the preservation of life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness from our Declaration of Independence, and the founding principle of our legal system, which separates us from the barbaric countries of the world, which states that all citizens in the United States are innocent until proven guilty. This is a principle that seems to have been forgotten by people like Cindy Barroway, Charles Davis, and others. Counselor Springsteen has advocated for citizens of Lakewood long before she became a city councilwoman. At no time during her history here has she ever done anything that should keep the rest of us from giving her the benefit of the doubt. She has stated on numerous occasions that she did not lie to the police. It is true that she hasn't made a statement, not because she doesn't want to or isn't willing to, but because she can't. She is a potential witness in an ongoing investigation. She can no more talk about the incident than city council members can talk about issues in front of them that are classified as quasi judicial. With regards to the news story that everybody is referring to, the fact that it came out a full four months after the actual incident took place stinks. It reeks of orchestration by people with hidden agendas. Today's elected officials are supposed to be the modern day statesmen. It's too bad we don't always act that way. When your constituents ask you about the situation, the proper response would be to say that Counselor Springsteen is not in a position to comment at this time. We need to let the investigation run its course, or something similar to that. As far as integrity is concerned, it doesn't take much integrity for several of you to ask one of your fellow counselors to do something, specifically make a statement, that you know full well she can't do at this time. To do so only serves to attempt to make yourselves look more important than you already think you are and further disparage another. You on council are the leaders who are supposed to guide us through our city's problems and take us into the future. It breaks my heart to see how quickly some of you are willing to take the opportunity to discredit one of your own. And for the record, the comments made by the four of you last Monday were bad enough, but for the rest of you to sit there and say nothing in rebuttal is almost as bad. Counselor Beeter has accepted from that statement because he did speak up during general business. Shame on the rest of you. I don't know what happened the day of alleged incident, neither do people who who are conducting this winch hunt, because we weren't there. I would ask that citizens of Lakewood.
Lap up your comments.
Thank you for uh, for listening to me. We owe uh, Counselor Springsteen a chance to make her statement at the correct time.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Salazar?
Call her 5579.
5579, please give us your name and address for the record, and then we'll start your three minutes.
Hello, my name is Stephen Buckley. I live at 1205 South Ingle Street, uh, which is in Ward 3, and I thank you all for offering this opportunity for public comment tonight, uh, in the virtual Zoom meeting in this time of emergency. I think it's useful that we can all stay safe, as the state health order, uh, since we are still safer at home, uh, by conducting this meeting from the comfort of our own many homes and being able to call in, which I think is a more inclusive and even easier way to give public comment than if I had to drive down to City Hall and speak to you all in person tonight. Uh, so I'm just so happy that you are providing this format of um, of public input during this time, and I think it's great. I wanted to make a statement tonight about uh, Ms. Springsteen's uh, recent misbehavior. Ms. Springsteen, you need to make a detailed statement about what happened. Your denials uh, that the, that you lied to police, your denials of the truth of the news reports that have come out is not very credible. There is a video taken by the employees of the assisted living facility of your boyfriend threatening them. It was reported that on two occasions at least, that last October and this January, uh, he did so, and the employees of the facility granted him the mercy of declining to press charges back in October, hoping there would be just a one-off incident, and it's clear that they got even more fed up in January, the second time that he was threatening him, where they did press charges, including felony menacing, which sadly is not the first felony charge for him, since he has a previous, uh, he has previously pled guilty, admitted to felony trespass and burglary, and served two years in prison for it. Uh, Ms. Springsteen, at the same time, last fall in October, when you were campaigning for your city council seat and stating that Lakewood needs to be a place where the neighborhoods are safe and where people have trust in their elected leaders again, you were allegedly lying to the police that you knew your boyfriend, who has been accused of uh, felony behavior, a- and with video evidence of that felony behavior, and witnesses seeing him coming in and out of your house, and your obvious admission now that you do know him, it's not very credible for you to deny that uh, the police report is true in saying that you do not know him. We need a more detailed statement from you, and it is a sad thing that someone who ran specifically on a platform of uh, being honest and truthful and restoring trust between constituents and representatives cannot give a more detailed statement. I understand there's a trial coming up. It is his, it is not yours. You could make a statement about what you told the police that day in October. Thank you.
Ms. Salazar?
Uh, call her 7634.
7634, please give us your name and address for the record. We'll start your three minutes, and I'll let you know when there's 10 seconds left.
Yes, my name's Brenda Bronson, and my uh, address is 11063 West Ohio Place. I'm in Ward 4. Um, I'm going to read, I didn't get an answer back from any of Lakewood city councilors to the email I sent um, uh, May 31st, and so I'm just going to read it into the record. Um, and it's about uh, City Councilor Anita Springsteen. I request City Councilor Anita Springsteen resign for line to the Lakewood Police and Lakewood City Council, and that Lakewood City Council hold a special election to replace her. As seen in the attached two police reports, Ms. Springsteen's boyfriend, Jeremy Axtehl, who has a long criminal history, has been charged with felony menacing and multiple other misdemeanor crimes of harassing and threatening Ms. Springsteen's group home neighbors. I request to have the clerk, I request, right now, I request to have the clerk read the police reports at the council meeting into the record so they are part of this public record. I would like those read into the public record. And but hopefully you can get a better copy of the October 2019 uh, report against Jeremy Axtehl, because it, the one I have doesn't include quite all the words. I I personally find it especially horrendous that the neighbors he has threatened and harassed on at least two separate occasions are the staff of a group home that cares for dementia patients. I don't know about Ms. Springsteen, but I live in Lakewood, we work to be good, helpful neighbors, and our neighbors do that, too. Living next to each other is much more pleasant when we're all courteous and kind to each other. How awful for the staff of this group home to have a neighbor like Ms. Springsteen, who has allowed her criminal boyfriend to repeatedly harass and menace her neighbors. However, I would not think this was a city council ma- matter if the police reports didn't say Ms. Springsteen initially lied to the police that she didn't know her boyfriend. Lying may not be a crime, but lying to the police is a crime. That Springsteen, as a city counselor, caught lying to her own Lakewood Police Department is beyond outrageous. I understand Ms. Springsteen is an attorney. If this is true, her lying to the police department also negatively impacts her professional misconduct. I hope she loses her license to practice. I'll certainly let the licensing board know about her behavior, as it's miss, professional misconduct for a lawyer. I'm going to leave out that part then. Although this is a group home for dementia patients, this facility has many, many other things.
Wrap up your comments.
Thank you. Resign, you should not be representing the people of Lakewood. Thank you.
So, real real quick, before we go to the next, please keep your comments directed to the City Council and the City Council members. Thank you. Ms. Salazar?
Call her 3467.
3467, please give us your name and address, and we will get you started.
Yes, this is Francis and Sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I- Thank you. Ms. Salazar?
Caller three four six seven.
Three four six seven, please give us your name and address, and we will get you started.
Yes, this is Francis Insure, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, I live at one twenty-five South Sepher Street in Ward One, and I just wanna commend and thank the mayor and council for approving the delay of the, uh, ordinance ten, or item ten and eleven on the agenda. I, I wrote the council last night in hopes that they would, uh, heed our advice and, uh, request to have a separate session with staff concerning the red line document that the commit- that the Committee of Citizens has developed. And I'm glad to see that there is going to be a process for that, and I'd like to commend, uh, Counselor Johnson for reinforcing the meeting, uh, between staff and the Lakewood Broadband Task Force. Um, you know, I noticed in the staff memo, uh, regarding this ordinance, uh, this agenda item, that the public outreach included several meetings with the cellular industry to obtain their feedback and subject- and suggestions. And I think we just need to, um, reinforce the idea that citizens should have an equal input in this process, because this is a highly controversial topic. So, again, I wanna thank the council for taking this action. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Salazar?
Caller five one four nine.
Five one four nine, please, uh, give us your name and address, and we'll start your three minutes.
Hi, my name is Shanna Guy, I live at fifty-five Yarrow Street in Ward One. I have a hard time trying to understand why my council is not looking further into the incident with Ms. Springsteen. In this trying time, everyone is asking for more policing. Police each other, at home, at work, and in general. Watch out for each other and stand up for one another. The nation is asking for more policing of law enforcement and government in general. I would look to my council to also police each other. Hold each other accountable for your actions and reactions, your demeanor, tolerance, and cooperation, or lack thereof. Council members are to represent their wards, all constituents, equally and fairly, no matter their personal agendas or opinions. Councilors are the face of Lakewood, and right now, I am very disappointed. On one hand, some of you do say that Ms. Springsteen was not charged with anything. Then on the other, you state people are innocent until proven guilty, and we need to wait for the disposition of that coming court case. She does not need to make a statement, but as council, you should certainly be able to look into some of these facts. How many complaints have been filed regarding Rocky Mountain Assisted Living Care Center? What are they, and what was the disposition of these complaints? What was the previous mediation request? Who asked for it and who declined to participate in it? What measures have previously been taken to help Ward Three neighbors work with this care center? Have Counselor Bida or other counselors, or even the mayor, reached out to Rocky Mountain Assisted Living Care Center to see what our city can offer in the way to help facilitate a collective resolve and enable this neighborhood to live in peace? I ask my council members to please do something. Thank you.
You? Ms. Salazar?
Uh, caller Cringen?
Caller Cringen, if you please give us your name and address, we'll start your three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Corinne Kringen, and I live at sixteen oh six South Newland Street. I am a neighbor to the memory care facility. I also have been a witness to a lot of things in my neighborhood. Um, Ms. Springsteen, as far as I'm concerned, um, has not lied to the police. I was a witness to that. Um, the memory care facility has been a nuisance in this neighborhood for multiple years, um, including dirty diapers rolling in to my fence as such. Um, I do believe that there, the truth has not been told by the Lakewood Police Department. Um, I've been a witness to many different things. Again, I wish you all a good evening, and that's what I have to say. Thank you very much.
You? Ms. Salazar?
Anyone else has raised their hand?
I will now close public comment, and, um, there was a, a question about our declaration of emergency, and, and that has been continued by the state of Colorado. And we are still under orders, I believe, from Jefferson County in some different ways. They have, um, asked for some different relief from those orders, but just FYI, and as far as those dollars that have come in through the federal government, those are all accounted for, which you'll see a little bit later this evening in depth as to where and what those dollars can go for, and it's pretty stringent and pretty strict. Um, as far as the other public comment tonight, as you can see, this is a challenging situation. We do have a code of conduct in our policies and procedures. Um, without any engagement, it's hard to really understand what has happened, but no matter what type of community complaint or neighborhood complaint there is, we need to work together in a meaningful manner, and that bar should be lifted for your city council and your mayor. And so there were folks who called in, who said that we'd like to see mediation. I think this would be a great opportunity for the community to come together and find out how to work towards a resolution. This is not new, it's been going on for seven years, and there are some concerns. And I know community wants us to do nothing, say something, don't say something. All I'm gonna say is that, we can do better, we must do better, we need to be good neighbors to one another and not have things escalate to this point, and there's not anybody asking for anybody to cause a problem to a criminal case. It's simply acknowledging the right thing to do and to move forward. And this is the least of things that we should be worried about at this time, and I hope that that resonates with this council to some way engage, either way, to move this forward in a positive manner for all involved. Thank you. Ms. Hodson, you have a executive report.
Yes, I do, thank you. Good evening. Um, just a couple of things, couple of comments. First of all, um, as it relates to the, the most recent public, public health order, I wanted to mention that just recently, in fact, yesterday, June seventh, the county issued the variances that they had received from CDPHE, which is Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Uh, we had asked for some waivers, and this is hot off the press, we just got this information. The following requests, and I'm reading the letter from CDPHE, the following requests are approved, but with these additional requirements, so please hear this clearly. We, they still want us to maintain the six-foot social distancing. The limit is fifty percent of posted occupancy code, um, ensuring a minimum of twenty-eight square feet per person not to exceed more than fifty people in any given time in a confined indoor space, and a hundred twenty-five people in any outdoor setting. So, the above reference, upper limits that I just described, apply to the requests that the county submitted for increased capacities for businesses and activities listed below. So let me review what we receive variances on. Um, and again, just to make this really clear, 'cause the letter says this over and over and over, don't forget, there's a requirement for a minimum of six feet between individuals or groups, um, along with a strong encouragement for the use of face coverings. And as was stated by the public, that isn't, um, that isn't a mandatory thing in the city of Lakewood, but it's considered a strong encouragement from the state. This, this includes gathering sizes, houses of worship, gyms, indoor malls, outdoor recreation, including outdoor facilities, outdoor pools, skate parks, and batting cages, museums, as well as Chatfield Farms, um, a part of Denver Botanic Gardens. Chatfield Farms, you probably have seen that, off of South Wadsworth, that also received a variance through this order. Group pubs and distilleries that are seating customers, again, with a six-foot distancing between the groups, um, and event centers limiting, limited to twenty-five people indoors and fifty people outdoors. Athletic fields are limited to no more than fifty people for youth and adult sports. Indoor malls, so think about Mills Mall, Colorado Mills Mall, um, can open in accord- in accordance with the requirements submitted with this application. Um, I understand that the Mills filled out a pretty thorough application, and so I heard from their, uh, general manager today that Mills Mall will finally be opening tomorrow. And that's great news, because, uh, as I had said earlier, Mills Mall employs about three thousand employees, so these people can get back to work. Now, all of this is in this most recent variance, and at the end of the letter, of course, it says this is all subject to adjustment if conditions worsen. So, I've heard, I, uh, wanted to make mention, we've heard a few times today, people want to see our city council meetings get back to council chambers, and I just heard frankly from one of our council members this evening saying, "Let's try to figure out how to get city council meetings back in the chambers." So, that is something that we're working on, trying to be in full accordance with, um, the state's order. We have asked our Thornton Thomasetti's group to give us an estimate for what that would cost for us to, um, install some of those protective kind of separations, so that we can have a physical separation between council members, and how do we spread you out so that we can be in compliance with a six-foot social distancing? So we are working on that. The other concern is that of the audience, and how do we keep, um, how do we keep the public separate? So we'll have to figure that out as well. Um, so, we're working on it, it is, this is not easy, and what's most concerning is it seems as if these rules, I don't mean to criticize, but they just keep changing, so we're having to adjust to all the different levels of these orders. So I'll, I'll keep you up to date, as up to date as we possibly can. So, as those orders relate to the city of Lakewood, here's some hot off the press information about what will be allowed at this, in the city. So playgrounds are gonna be open, but they have a ten-person limit, and that's self-monitoring, and we've got signs that indicate that the ten-person restrictions. Tennis and pickleball courts, a limit of twenty-five per facility. Uh, Bear Creek Lake Park, everything except for the swim beach, the shelters, and the boat inspection statement are open for the public. And I happen to, uh, visit that park frequently, and, um, people are enjoying Bear Creek Lake Park, I'm glad to say. The golf courses are fo- fully open with the appropriate social distancing requirements. Recreation and arts, we have virtual classes, we have outdoor classes, up to ten people allowed, and personal training, which is up to four people per group. Our outdoor field rentals and sports are starting soon, and a lot of kids are excited to hear that, up to twenty-five people per field. As it relates to family services, Head Start classes are starting at Pat- Patterson Cottages for those, for those kiddos. Um, we have a couple of things that are canceled and yet still under consideration. So all of our events are, are canceled through cider days, which is the first weekend of October. I know that's heartbreaking for the public who really enjoy the special events that we have, but because of the potential exposure, we just couldn't, we couldn't hold those. The cleanup day, which is scheduled for October tenth, is still under consideration, so we're waiting to see what the latest order will be to see if we'll be able to hold the cleanup day on October tenth. Um, many people wanna know if we're opening recreation centers and pools, and you'll remember that we had forty-three full-time employees that were furloughed, so it's taken us a little time to figure out which centers we can open and to call staff back to report to duty, which would be, which will be really good for them. So I'll let you know as soon as we have that information. But please, please let me qualify by saying, all of this is subject to change, and it will change, and we're doing our best to keep you as up to date as possible. So thank you, and thanks to the community resources team for following all of the different orders and adjusting accordingly, so thank you. Okay, so I wanna shift gears a little bit and talk about the police department and give you an update. This has been a very difficult time to be a police officer, as you can imagine. Um, the Lakewood Police Department has enjoyed a reputation of professionalism, compassionate justice, and utmost integrity. The Lakewood Police Department has served as a role model of best practices to law enforcement agencies across the country. Many of Lakewood's programs, programs have been replicated over and over. One of the late, the most recent one is our CAT program. Um, some of our friends and neighbors have stole that, and lots of people across the country are asking about our CAT program because that's been so successful. As you know, people across the country are concerned and have serious questions about police tactics, and I can tell you, it's been a, a really tough period of time for our men and women who have dedicated their careers for the police department. What I've done for this evening is I've asked our own Chief McCaskey if he would join us on this Zoom call just for a brief time to make a statement. Um, and then, once he makes the statement, I'm gonna follow up with, um, some of the actions that we have agreed to take, that we'll be taking to help assure our Lakewood community of the, um, police practices that we follow that really distinguish us as, as leaders in this profession. So if you'd will, if you notice on your screen, Chief McCaskey has joined us, he's gonna make a statement, and then I'll follow up with, um, all of the rest of the actions that we'll be taking, um, ending in a study session. So with that, can I introduce Chief Dan McCaskey?
Good evening, chief, welcome. Hi, good evening, man, city council, and thank you for this opportunity to, uh, read a letter to the Lakewood community. We're gonna be sending this out very, very soon. So this is a message to our Lakewood community members. The Lakewood Police Department is shocked, appalled, and disgusted by the horrific murder of George Floyd at the hands of the Minneapolis police officers. Law enforcement is a noble profession, filled with honorable public servants who will not tolerate this action. We are offended by this outrageous conduct. Such conduct has led to the portrayal that everyone in the police profession is comparable to the officers who were present at this tragic event. We assure you this is not the case, and want you to continue to have faith and trust in the members of the Lakewood Police Department. We are committed to serving you every single day. The mission of the Lakewood Police Department is that the men and women will protect and serve with integrity, intelligence, and initiative. It is our commitment to you that we will never stop honoring our mission served. The Lakewood Police Department takes incredible pride in our professionalism and our ethical and principled staff. We have extremely stringent hiring standards, relevant and ongoing training, and a very disciplined code of conduct for our police agents. We have not and will not, not ever tolerate mistreatment of any individual, ethical violations, racism, or abuse of authority. As your police chief, my commitment to you is that we will work to restore your trust in, in law enforcement profession that has been so badly shaken by these national events. We in Lakewood will continue to hire the most qualified candidates to serve you in a fair, impartial, impartial and compassionate manner. We will continue our rigorous training to ensure you receive the highest quality of service. We will ensure that there is no room in the Lakewood Police Department for anyone who is biased against any group of people. Thank you for allowing us to serve you. Thank you, chief. Ms. Hodson?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, chief, I appreciate that very much. Um, as I said, now I wanna talk about the follow-up that we'll be conducting, um, to help educate and inform our public and to give some assurance in terms of the practices of the Lakewood Police Department. The statement, the letter that the chief just, uh, verbalized will be in written form, in the form of a letter to the community, and that'll be posted tomorrow. You'll be able, we can, if you'd like, we can send that to each of you as well, if you would like to forward that or post it on any of your distribution, social media, whatever those channels might be. As I mentioned in my email last Friday, the police- the Police Department is currently just completing this pretty thorough document that talks about Lakewood policing and what that means and, and tactics and training that is utilized. It's a thorough and comprehensive document. And I think it'll serve as a real resource for you. We will post it on the website. You can grab it and post it on, again, on your distribution channels or, and share it with whoever you'd like, whatever, whoever would like to see that. And when you're having conversations with constituents, um, you'll be able to take pieces of that, depending on what the particular interest is, and speak to that with a, a higher level of knowledge. So I think that'll be a really good resource for you. We have a whole team that's been working on that for days. We've gotten, um, I asked Dan, our customers, our consumers, uh, response person, asked him how many emails and letters we've received. And as it relates to original emails or letters, we've gotten about 25, maybe 30. And we're trying to address those concerns and those questions in this document. So hopefully that'll be really helpful to you. Additionally, we're, uh, the chief and I will be producing a video. Um, it'll be a, a discussion with the chief so that we can post a video of just a conversation so people can see the person behind the Police Department. And um, I'll be asking questions and it'll be, hopefully, um, it'll be interesting, I hope. And it'll be helpful as well for people who learn visually and auditorily. You'll be able to see um, a nice conversation that answers some of the questions and hopefully provides some assurance. Additionally, we will be um, implementing something we're calling a community interaction plan. And the whole idea behind this plan, it's gonna be a deliberate outreach with our minority community. Um, I looked up this, Carrie Cutter today helped me find this information that is Lakewood demographics. And so we are um, black or African-American in Lakewood, and this is as of a year ago today. Um, 1.4% of our population. Um, Asian alone, that's 3.3 of our population. Two or more races reported 3.1%. Hispanic or Latino, 23.1. And white alone, so people who report themselves as white alone and not Latino or Hispanic, that's 69.4. So we will be reaching out um, in a, in a pretty grassroots way to talk to our communities of color and to our religious sectors, our faith-based folks, and try to reach as many diverse, diverse populations as we can. With the whole idea is to um, really listen and really hear. We want to know what people are thinking. We want to know what are people's concerns about their own personal safety? And what are their concerns about the safety of their community? And what do they want to tell the Police Department? So this will be done in kind of an unorthodox way. Uh, we don't want to do it in the, in the regular study session or town hall. We want to do it in the um, way where we go to the different communities and see if we can be invited in to sit down just for a chat. Um, and, and to really hear what's on people's minds and what can we do better? And how can we think about community safety better as it relates to the reflections from the different populations of our community? And finally, we will be scheduling a study session on Lakewood policing. And that will be a formal study session, whether it's on virtual or in person. We don't, of course, we don't know yet. But whichever one, what we want to do is go over community policing and Lakewood's um, practices. And also, report to you on what we learned from the different populations that make up our city of Lakewood. So I, I hope that that feels satisfactory to you. I think that's pretty comprehensive. And um, as time goes on, if there's more information that you'd like, or if you hear other kind of concerns in the community, please make sure to pass that to me and I'll make sure that we're attending to um, the issues in the community. And, and I'd be remiss if I didn't express my, my personal appreciation and my respect and support for the Police Department. So thank you, Chief, for joining us. This also concludes my report. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hodgson. Chief McCaskey, thank you very much. And we certainly appreciate you coming on tonight. And, and you have a lot going on and certainly a challenging time for the dedicated men and women of our Police Department. So please thank them. And Ms. Hodgson, you acted fast, you know, there's these things. Well, we've seen a lot through a lot of different time periods. This bubbled up fast and furious and you've, you've acted in a real responsive manner. And this is just the start for all of the community. And one that I think we'll all engage in our own circles and try to uh, work with the different constituencies. So um, I look forward to continuing to support everyone and really look for meaningful processes moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
Mayor Protem, did you mean to have your hand up?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh, before Chief McCaskey left, to say thank you uh, for him coming in. And thank you to Ms. Hodgson for that presentation for the plan moving forward. I think that's uh, a, a great plan, um, actually getting out into the community and hearing that. And so it's not just us talking to each other about it, but getting the unique and diverse voices from all of commu, all of the community come in and really share. I know I've spoken with uh, the mayor a bit about this and, and I know his interest in really listening to people. He's made that a focus. It sounds like even the chief share that. So I'm uh, I, it's, it's, I'm proud to hear that and definitely echo the support uh, for you and uh, the chief on that. Um, and just lastly, want to say that, you know, we can, obviously, we can always do better, whether it's us doing better, whether it's the department, whether it's the police. Um, and I think, just don't lose track of all the things that Ms. Hodgson mentioned, whether it's the CAT program and a lot of the things that those guys do that don't get a lot of press.
Yeah.
Um, whether it's, you know, we did get, um, we do have a lot of modeling that happens, that a lot of police departments do look at us as best practices. So while we can always examine other jurisdictions, just know that people do that with us. And there are certainly um, some departments that need a lot of reform. And like I said, we can always do better. But I am encouraged by what I've heard from both the chief, the mayor, Ms. Hodgson, my fellow counselors. Um, it is encouraging. And so to all those that have been emailing us, um, it, there is a plan moving forward and we are responding to that. And I'm, I am greatly encouraged by what I've heard tonight. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And um, Counselor Gutway, and you had your hand up, and so did Counselor Bida.
Thank you. Um, I just also wanted to really echo a heartfelt thank you um, to Chief McCaskey for reading that letter and to you, Kathy Hodgson. And I think that this response um, it is just another example of the overall approach from our Police Department, which is, you know, really taking a, you know, a partnership and a community-based approach. Um, and I, I admire um, your courage to lean into these challenging conversations. And I also really appreciate um, the, the plan to go out and meet people where they are instead of just hoping that people are gonna come to us because frankly, a lot of times our council room and um, public comment isn't that diverse. And so I really love that you're gonna go out and, and meet and talk with people. And um, I'm hopeful that we can use this as an opportunity to continue to improve. Um, and I'm just deeply thankful for uh, our, our department and our leadership here um, as we navigate this and, and strive to do better.
Counselor Bida?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I echo all of those comments. And I just want to add one thing that I think is part of our outreach. It's gonna be very important to help educate our constituents and uh, help them understand and know what we all know, which is that our, our department does a great job. But uh, a lot of that's unsung and we don't, we don't get that information out every day. And so I think we need to make sure that uh, there's a dimension here of uh, educating and reaching out, not only to hear from our, from our public, but also for them to know uh, what the truth is, uh, as far as our department goes. And I think that's really important. And I urge, urge, urge us to do that. That's all. Thank you.
Well said, Counselor. Okay, Counselor, we can come back during your reports or general business if you want to say anything else. So I don't see any more hands up. Um, with that, we will go into the consent agenda, and that's item seven. I'll ask um, our clerk to please read the consent agenda into the record.
Consent agenda consists of item seven. Item seven, ordinance O-2020-18, authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the 2020 City of Lakewood annual budget in the amount of $269,697 in coronavirus emergency supplemental funding, program funds from the Bureau of Justice, assistance and authorizing the expenditure thereof.
Now open the public hearing on ordinance O-2020-18. And we will now have public comment, which same rules apply. Do we have anybody in the queue? Ms. Salazar, two? Okay. So um, again, this is for item seven, and we have two people in the queue for public comment. Ms. Salazar, if you'll please read the last four digits. You have to unmute yourself, I'm sorry.
There's no one with their hand up.
Okay, so maybe they're waiting for another one. All right, so I'll close public comment and um, ask for a motion, Mayor Protem.
It's first reading.
You're right, it's on the consent agenda. I'll still need a motion.
You do need this motion. Mayor Paul, I, I, I order, well, that's interesting, okay. Uh, Mayor Paul, I order the ordinance introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearings set for the date included in the ordinance, all of which are included in the consent agenda item introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Just point a clarification, though, just to double check with the clerk's office, this is first reading and not second? Okay. But I, okay, I just want to make sure we didn't see this two weeks ago, so. All right, I trust you. Okay, any uh, any comments? It's just for scheduling. Please cast your votes. Passes 10 ayes, zero nays. We're trying to figure out the Zoom meeting. All right, the end of the consent agenda, so now we'll go to the emergency ordinance number eight. I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-17. Ask the clerk to please read that into the record.
Item eight, ordinance O-2020-17, authorizing the supplemental appropriation to the 2020 City of Lakewood annual budget in the amount of $12,312,019 in funds distributed by Jefferson County from the Coronavirus Relief Fund and authorizing the expenditure thereof and further declaring an emergency.
Thank you very much. And we will invite Ms. Bjorklund, our CFO, to join us, and she will give us a presentation on this. And this is what Ms. Hodgson talked a little bit about earlier with kind of where these dollars are going. And you will notice it is an emergency, so it will take a super majority to be accepted tonight so that it goes into effect immediately. Good evening, Ms. Bjorklund.
Good evening. I have a presentation that I will share with you. Great. Um, so uh, what I'm talking about tonight is the COVID-19 Relief Fund and the CARES funding. Um, so we talked a little bit last week about this. And this presentation is to give you more detail about it and be able to answer any questions that you may have. So uh, just to give you some background, I think we've talked about this before, but just to kind of pull the information together, there was a total of $2.2 billion overall that was received for Colorado. Um, the counties with populations over 500,000 received an allocation. And Jefferson County received 101.7 million. And then it was distributed um, to the cities, 29.8 million. As you can see on the right-hand side, the distribution for um, each of the cities within Jeffco. And it was based on population. So Lakewood got uh, 12.3 million in allocation. So the intent tonight is to answer any questions so that this can be approved um, for spending and um, uh, put into the budget. So uh, just to remind you of what the CARES Act's guidelines are, there are three specific overarching guidelines, which are um, it, it needs to be reasonably necessary related to COVID. And then we're not um, accounted for in the budget that we already have, so there are additional expenses. And um, we are incurring the expense between now and December 30th, or between March 1st and December 30th. So in terms of the process that we went through to come up with the list of um, uh, spending that we would have for the CARES Act, is we first worked with the city attorney's office to determine what is allowable and provide some guidelines for that. Then the leadership identified a comprehensive list of the expenditures for the CARES Act funding. Um, and then the list uh, were prioritized based on uh, the direct response, second order, second order effects, and community response, which we talked about were the three categories uh, last week of how we broke up um, the expected spending. And uh, then finally, we had the list reviewed again uh, by the city attorney to ensure the compliance with the CARES Act, to make sure we were um, being consistent with what the requirements were. So the allocation of CARES funds. So uh, we had talked about that we have two groupings for that, the community response and recovery. And you uh, heard from Robert Smith last week a little bit about um, the distribution for uh, business grants, and you'll hear from him again today. And then also you heard about the nonprofit organizations um, providing uh, goods and services to residents in response to the COVID-19. So um, and that one was already discussed. Then we also have local government response and recovery. And that aids in the direct response and recovery of um, the COVID-19 emergencies, addresses the health and safety and employees, and for employees and citizens. So uh, the next thing I wanted to do is, last time I had spoken um, more at a high level of these items that uh, would be included in the spending that we're proposing. And uh, this is a little more detail in terms of that list, um, so that you have a little more um, background on where the spending would occur. Um, and also give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you may have. So for direct response, um, uh, Counselor Abel had asked the question of what's been spent so far? And there's $108,000 that has already been spent. And that's within this category of direct response. And that's been paid for by the City of Lakewood so far. So this would um, be able to uh, So this would be able to refund that money. So the areas, and this is just some examples and groupings. This is not everything that's under direct response, but it gives you a good sense of what it'd be spent on. So personal protective, protective equipment, so PPE. Then we have barriers and protections. So that's intercom system and that's for the fleet shop. So that individuals can ring the doorbell and then have an intercom system versus talking to a person in person. And then also cubicle partitions. Some of the cubicles do not have partitions between them. So that's in response to needing to have that six feet difference separation between people. And we also have homeless response. So there's two things in that category. Camp cleanup contracts of having someone else, organization clean up homeless camps because it creates the situation where you may have people that are too close to each other. And then community action team vehicles. So that's when you need to clean up a lot of individual items at homeless camp. And then vehicle service costs. So as you know, there's many city vehicles and they have to be cleaned more often and more effectively. So it's, there's a cost that goes along with that. And then enhanced teleworking security measures. So as you know, most of the employees are working remotely and there needs to be enhanced security measures for that as people are working remotely, working on Zoom and having video conferencing. And then the last item we have for the examples in direct response is hazard pay. So that, that says people are having more hazardous work in relation to the COVID nineteen response. So the second category is the second order effects. And I actually forgot to mention that the direct response was eight hundred and thirty nine thousand. And then the second order effects is six point seven million dollars. And that one, we have barriers and protections. So we have that category in the, in the direct response as well. So this is more the long term, once we get back to work. How do we continue to change our environment so that we can keep both the employees and the citizens protected in a more long term perspective? So that's what these items are. So we have the clerk and permit counters and plexiglass barriers. If you've been to City Hall, you may have seen the plexiglass barriers for any of the counters that we have so that when citizens come up, that there is a barrier between the employee and the citizen. And then also, as had been mentioned today, the council chamber redesign. So what can be done in order to allow for in-person council chambers? And then under cleaning, we have the cleaning supplies, the electrostatic sprayers, which Ms. Hodson had mentioned last time and spoke a little bit about in more detail. And we have enhanced custodial schedules. So as you know, we need to clean more often, so we need to have the custodial staff on site more often. And then countless building, sorry, contactless building entry. So that's like having the keypad entry instead of having that where you have to actually touch it. That you have a swipe access, so you have a badge access. And then having automatic doors and gates. So again, it's not touching things that other people have touched. And then distance connectivity. So public hearing software, just as we are using today. And video conferencing equipment, applicant testing. So that's like when you, when a person applies for a job, there is testing that usually goes along with that. In the past, it's been in person. This would be online. Then we also have several areas in technology infrastructure, which is internet upgrades, equipment for remote employees, enhancing business services, web portals, enhancing authentication and employee portals and data backup sites. So that's all related to having to work remotely and what is the support that we need from a technology perspective to make all that work and do it safely? Then we have enhancing security measures. That's with the police and other areas as well. And then building inspections, postponement catch-ups. So building inspections had to be delayed because of not being able to do things in person. And then unemployment and FFCRA costs. So those are the costs that go along with the, the family CARES Act costs that have been or funding that has been provided. And you may know that Lakewood does have to pay for its own unemployment. So this would be covering it. It is a coverable cost. And the employee wellness and psychological services. So the impact that COVID nineteen has had on employees in general. And the last area is the community, which you've had several discussions on. For nonprofit grants, seven hundred and fifty thousand, which is something that you all decided and discussed. And then business grants that would be discussed further today from Robert Smith. And then future business grants or loans, so a million dollars that we put aside, put aside for that to first see how the business grants process is working and how successful it is. And so the total for the list is twelve point three million dollars. So that give probably, I hope, gives you a good sense of where the spending would go if we were to go forward with using these funds for the CARES Act. That's all I had for my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bjorkland. Much appreciated. So I'm going to now open public comment. So if you wish to speak on item eight, please hit star nine. Is that accurate? Is there anybody in the queue to speak on this? Ms. Salazar?
No one has raised their hand.
Well, now close public comment on item eight. And before we go into questions or comments, I'll ask the Mayor Protem for a motion.
Thank you, man. Bear with me. This one's a long one. I move to approve ordinance number zero da, or O dash twenty twenty dash seventeen. Authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the twenty twenty city of Lakewood annual budget in the amount of twelve million, three hundred twelve thousand dollars and nineteen cents in funds distributed by Jefferson County from the Coronavirus Relief Fund and authorizing the expenditure thereof. And I further move to approve this ordinance as an emergency ordinance and be made effective immediately in order to protect the health, safety and welfare of Lakewood residents and businesses because of the significant financial harm suffered by Lakewood businesses and the short timeframe set by federal law for the expenditure of the CARES Act's funds. And I move that this emergency ordinance be adopted on first and final reading pursuant to chapter one point two seven of the Lakewood Municipal Code concerning the powers granted to the city manager during a declared emergency and pursuant to the city council's prior direction to staff to invoke those emergency powers and specifically to waive and or suspend the procedures and notices normally required for an adoption of an ordinance because without the suspension of those procedures, the effective date of this ordinance may well be too late for the funds appropriated to be of value to the recipients.
Second.
Let me see if there's any more. Nope, that's it.
Sounds like it was written by a lawyer. So Mr. Cox, thank you very much. Did you want to weigh in? Go ahead, sir.
Well, I did, just on one, one minor point. And that is that as we put this motion together and took a team of experts, of course, to do that, the, the numbers were, were written out wrong for the motion. So I heard Counselor or Mayor Protem Skilling referred to nineteen cents. That's supposed to be nineteen dollars. And that's, that's an error in the text, not in the reading. So I wanted to make sure that was, that was clear as the motion.
Okay, so.
I will start over and read again.
It, it, it doesn't require anything more than acknowledgement that that was the correct language.
All right, Counselor Abel, you are up.
Thank you. I still recall when we discussed this last, there were some items, items thrown out by Ms. Harrison and myself. I believe Ms. Gutwine had a couple of other additions to the language. I believe we wanted to limit the eligible recipients to those businesses with twenty five or fewer employees. I also had a concern that we, folks such as food trucks, pop-up boutiques, that sort of thing that are attached to businesses not licensed in Lakewood. I don't think they should be allowed, so I had offered a, an amendment that would limit the eligibility to those businesses who own, lease or rent property.
Real quick, sir, real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think that's for item nine.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Yep, just, yep, yep, yep. That's all right. So this is just setting aside the twelve million and then item nine is the one where we get more specific.
Okay. Consider that already spoken and I'll, I'll not repeat it on item nine. Item two, thank you.
You're moving fast tonight. You want to see this done.
Thank you.
Yep. Counselor Johnson? Item eight.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. One thing is, at the end, we were told about nonprofits to receive seven hundred and fifty thousand. I didn't think that that was a settled question. I thought that was maybe still up in the air a little bit and still, for, for discussion with counsel. That was my recollection. I'd just like to have that on record. And also, it tweaked my curiosity regarding employee wellness and psychological services. I appreciate the, the spirit behind that. Is there an amount that is associated with that? And I'm curious how many employees use the psychological services?
Okay, so I will tackle the nonprofit part. And counsel did authorize two rounds at three hundred and twenty five thousand dollars each. So the first round was just done and then there'll be a second round. Secondly, I, I don't know if we have the exact on employee health and wellness and certainly want to be respectful of our, of our folks who are, are going through that. So I don't know, Ms. Hodson, if you want to address that.
So that, that was originated in the police department. And with this kind of crisis and the extra strain that our police department has gone through, that was a line item that was submitted by our police chief. It has been thoroughly vetted and it's certainly an appropriate use of the CARES dollars. As, as it relates to the amount, I don't know, as with all these amounts, we don't know how many folks will take advantage of that service, but we absolutely wanted to make that available for folks. I mean, don't forget, some of these individuals who are, who are out on the streets have, when they, when they feel as if they've been exposed, they come home and undress in the garage so that they don't risk an exposure to their loved ones at home. So there's been some significant, as you can imagine, psychological, psychological kind of impact. So we wanted to make sure to include that, at least for the police department. And frankly, if some of our other employees want to take advantage of that, I, I certainly wouldn't want to deny them that opportunity. Let me go one step further and say, think about some of the folks who are working in the parks and how overcrowded our parks are and some of the conflict resolution they're having, they're encountering, encountering that they otherwise haven't experienced. So it's those kinds of things that we just wanted to set those dollars aside for. So thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. The question needed to be asked, but I very much appreciate the clarity on what, what it all means. Thank you.
And I appreciate being able to answer it. So thank you.
Any, any other questions? Okay, so we have an emotion, an emotion. We have a motion and a second for item eight, ordinance O twenty twenty dash seventeen. Second final reading and an emergency. Please cast your votes. That passes ten ayes, zero nays. Ms. Johnson, your hand is up. Okay, your hand is down. Okay. We'll now open the public hearing on item nine. Continued ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen. I'll ask the clerk to please read that into the record.
Item nine, continued ordinance O dash twenty twenty dash sixteen. Creating the COVID nineteen Business Relief and Recovery Grant Program and authorizing the supplemental appropriation to the city of Lakewood twenty twenty annual budget in the amount not to exceed three million dollars from the CARES Act dollars received through Jefferson County and authorizing the expenditure thereof and further declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And if anybody was about to fall asleep, you will now be awake with a presentation by Mr. Robert Smith, who will provide a lot of energy. So much energy that. There he is.
Well, thank you very kindly. I always appreciate your introduction, sir. Trying to keep the energy level up as always. Hang on just a second. It looks like my camera is turned off, so let me turn that on right now. Can everybody hear me? Big thumbs up so that we know I'm in here. Thank you very much. Happy to be here with you this evening to talk about this ordinance at some length. What I've got in front of you is some changes to the ordinance since the first time it ran through. Obviously, we've got two, two times where it comes in the first time and set for the public hearing. We talked about it last week, which was the original setting for it. Now that we've accepted those CARE doll, CARES dollars, we're able to do a, a different program, help out our businesses a lot more. So what I'd like to do is just kind of run you through all of the, the changes that are on that ordinance, point out a couple of typos that I have and I apologize for those, but I'll let you know where those are at. And let's go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I pushed too soon on here. I need to share my screen and bring up this PowerPoint. There we go. That's more like what I wanted to do. And so we'll start at the beginning of the ordinance, obviously, ordinance sixteen. Highlighted on there are some changes that happened between the first and the second. Name the program just a little bit differently, COVID nineteen Business Relief and Recovery Grant Program. Now that we've made it through the month of May, hopefully these dollars will help some of our businesses not only get some relief from the lack of revenues, but also move towards their recovery as well. The amount not to exceed three million dollars, you'll recall that previously it was at one million dollars. Now with these CARES dollars from the federal government, we're able to expand the program, triple it in fact. And so hopefully we'll be very successful in getting those out to our businesses in a way that really helps them out. And of course, those CARE dollars are coming from Jefferson County, are coming through Jefferson County from the feds. Made a little typo in section two on page three. I've highlighted it right here. It indicates a million dollars. Million dollars was the previous amount. This should be three million dollars. Million dollars was the previous amount. This should be three million dollars. We'll correct this in the, in the final version of this here. Just a little error there, just wanted to point it out to you. Some ego-eyed council people brought that to my attention, and I always appreciate folks thoroughly reviewing the documentation. So, thank you for doing that. Was one other error in the Exhibit A, which is what outlines the program for the Business Grant Program. And that is on that, it looks like sixth paragraph. It indicated that for either a grant or a loan, you may recall that the first version of this had loans involved with this. The current version has nothing but grants. Fourth one I'll mention right along the way here is on page six. You can see the two parts of the, of the document there. We need to insert one here because we just simply forgot this paragraph. And the paragraph reads that of the three million dollars being in this program, in this proposed program, two million is individual qualifying large grants. They're up to thirty thousand dollars per awardee. They'll be awarded. The remaining one million dollars of the three million dollars will be in the form of three thousand dollar random drawing grants for all the other eligible applicants that haven't been awarded under the, under the grant, the qualifying grant program. And you recall that the grant, qualifying grant program involved a weighted rubric. The rubric is in the document there. Happy to talk about that at length if you have some questions. Had some really great questions from folks, both in public and, and from counsel over the last few days, this last week. I did check in with our Lakewood Together project site. There were no questions or comments from the public on this particular item, so I don't have any answer there from them. I will point out that, happy to take your questions and talk about this program to where you would like to talk about it. I know Councilmember Abel mentioned some of the things that were mentioned last week. We think we baked them into the, into the equation, but it sounded like you had a couple more things that wanted to put on the table. It's up on the screen for just a moment, and I'll take it off the screen here in just a second. I did want to mention two very important links for the business community that may be tuned in for this particular item. They're both the Lakewood.org, but in the backslash, first one is Resources for Business. Those, again, are those carefully curated links that take businesses to places where they can get resources to be more successful in navigating this pandemic. Again, we carefully cultivate those, curate those, so that all of those links are things that are authentic and real, and are able to help out businesses. The other one that I'd like to point out is the Support Local Biz, B I Z, you see on the end there. That's a, will allow our local businesses to put themselves on a map. We have a map that shows all of the businesses and where they're at. They can modify it as they go along. So as they're opening up, we had some terrific success over the last couple of weeks in opening business, more businesses up as the orders, the safer at home orders are released just a little bit, we're able to open those businesses up. They're able to place it on that map and say, you know, hey, now we've got in-dining with six-foot distances and fifty percent capacity or twenty-five percent capacity wherever they're at, so that folks know what they're doing with those particular businesses. And with that, I will go ahead and stop sharing the screen and be happy to take on any questions that you may have about this particular ordinance or program.
I'll now open the public comment portion of ordinance twenty twenty dash sixteen, which is item nine. Ms. Alzar, do we have anybody who'd like to?
Yes, we have one caller, eighty-nine twenty-three.
Okay, caller eighty-nine twenty-three, if you please give us your name and address, we'll start your three minutes.
My name is Joan Poston. I am at one zero sixty-four West Bassett Place. I am interested in this because I had a friend of mine who applied to the last grant and was told she couldn't apply because her business was home-based. She had a dog sitting business with five employees. All of her employees worked in the field, which was in other people's homes and such, and yet, because she had a home-based, and I had another friend who was an insurance agent and worked out of her home as well. Can you address why home-based businesses aren't considered for this program?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can. Is there anything else?
Um, I have other concerns about, one, I don't think there's enough money that's being done to these businesses. A lot of businesses have been devastated by what you're doing. And I think one of the things that has come out of this COVID situation is that we're somewhat picking winners and losers. You can have a gym that has ten thousand square feet, and you can distance with that at six feet, but you have a gym that's only got five thousand square feet, and you have a whole different situation on your hands. I think picking winners and losers this way with businesses has been terribly difficult on our businesses and on our economy in the whole.
Great. Thank you very much. Ms. Alzar, anybody else?
One else has raised their hand.
Okay. I'll go ahead and close public comment. And just to clarify, this is our first round of business. Our other rounds were just nonprofit programs, so we have not done a business program yet. And Mr. Smith, maybe you can work the home-based part in. Or we can just address that right now, or, or tackle that, then we can go to Counselors Gutwine, Skilling, and Bida afterwards.
You bet. Happy to address that. In this particular program, again, as you mentioned, there haven't been any business-based programs out of the City of Lakewood. Lots of other communities have had them, and most of them have not allowed for home-based businesses along the way. What you have before you tonight would allow for a home-based business to be a part of this, this consideration. We believe that our home-based businesses are valuable. We know that many of them are, are very successful and that they operate out of those. The first round that we had, or the first attempt, or the first proposal in the, in the first round, did not include home-based businesses. Now that we've got a little bit more money to be put into the, into the kitty, we've opened it up there. Some of the requirements are that you, every business that applies for this has to have an employment identification number from the state, which means that you've registered with the state. You're in good standing with the state of Colorado, so it does have to be that sort of a business. It also has to be the kind of business where you earn seventy-five thousand dollars or more in revenues, not necessarily your, your net profit, but your gross revenues. And that allows us to distinguish between some home-based businesses that sometimes we refer to as hobby businesses or, or that sort of thing. If I, if I do something I love as a hobby, and I, I happen to sell some things occasionally on there, that's not really a business and wouldn't be considered a business for this program. But what we have before you tonight would allow for home-based businesses, again, the seventy-five thousand dollars in revenues in twenty nineteen, a current Colorado business license, and then some level of being hurt by the COVID situation. Those are on there. And then as far as picking winners and losers, as, as the caller mentioned, that's one of the reasons why we're in this weighted rubric, as well as the, as well as the random drawing, so that hopefully we can be as fair and as fair and impartial to all of our businesses as long as they meet the basic requirements that are required to have their application be eligible.
Great, thank you. So, Counselor Gutwine?
Thank you. First, I just want to thank Economic Development for getting this program together. This is the first time we've done a program like this, and I'm, I'm excited. I'm glad that we're going to be able to get some relief out to our community. I know, you know, we're dealing with tremendous economic impacts, but I'm hopeful that this is going to provide some good. And I also want to thank the task force, our local businesses, who participated and helped us so that we could hear that, you know, directly from the community what would help. I, I have an amendment I would like to make. Is this the appropriate time?
Yeah, no. So, process-wise, no, because we haven't read, we haven't made the motion this second. But I was going to go to Mayor Protem and kind of get some clarification, but we can, if you want to talk about the amendments,
Sure.
then we can make sure we have the right language, and we can go back to the clarifying and, and leave that to the Mayor Protem to figure that out.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so basically, we're seeing in Jefferson County a disparate impact from COVID, and especially on our Hispanic population. And my goal, or what I would like to do and would love for the council to support doing is to just ensure that we are taking the steps necessary to reach everyone in our community, and especially those that are getting the most impact. And so this is really about making sure it's available and accessible to everybody. So, what, what I, or what I would propose is three things. First, that we make it accessible by requiring all forms and information in English and Spanish. This will have a very low to minimal, to no cost, is my understanding. That when we do our outreach to tell the community about this program, that we reach out to Latinx businesses, minority-owned businesses, and businesses in the opportunity zone. And finally, that we include a phone number on our application for questions, so that when our businesses have questions about the grant, that there's an easy number for them to call. And that's really just because, you know, our businesses are going through enough already. If we can make this process as easy as possible, I think that would be great. So it's just those three things with the goal of ensuring that, you know, everyone in Lakewood has the opportunity and access to this grant. And that is, that is all.
Thank you. Counselor Bida?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I just have a, last three questions, simple questions. Also want to thank our Economic Development team for reaching out to the business community and getting their input as to what would help them understand this has been done, what's going to be the most beneficial to them, and I think that's really important. So thank you for doing that. First question, the, as I understand it now, we're not talking about any loans. Early on, we were talking about combination of loans and grants. As I am understanding this now, there's not, we're not talking about loans. It's all grants, correct?
That is correct. No loans involved with the program that's in front of you with the ordinance tonight.
Okay, thank you. Okay, second question. The million dollars that we heard about that's kind of being held back, when we heard from our, our Director Barkland, that is, that hasn't been decided as to how that would be distributed. It could, if in fact we at some point were to go ahead and appropriate that other million, it could be distributed like this, or it could be distributed in a different way, depending on what we decide, correct?
Correct. It will be your decision as to what the second round, how that might be distributed.
Okay. Then my third question is, is there any requirement in, in, in the requirements for these grants that the business remain in business for any length of time after they receive the funds? In other words, is there anything that prevents a business from, you know, turning around the next week and closing, taking the money and closing up and saying, "Thank you very much"?
At this time, there's nothing that we have in terms of guaranteeing that the business will continue on into the, the future. We're hopeful that we have several questions in there about what are your plans to move forward? Have you availed yourself of some of the other programs available from the federal government? But there is no guarantee implicit in the program, and I'm not certain if they were to say that they were going to continue, and then for whatever reason be forced out, you know, how exactly we would, we would make that, make that, we would have something to come back to. So, that's the, the short answer is no.
Are you saying you think it'd be pretty hard to enforce a provision that said they had to pay it back if they don't stay in business for ninety days or something? We'd have trouble enforcing it anyway?
That would be difficult because theoretically, the business would be out of business, and they would have a variety of creditors that were looking to gain dollars from them at some point. We would get in that line, and certainly we, if, if that, if it does come down to that, we certainly will avail ourselves of every possible resource that we have. But given the circumstances, we don't have anything very specific that says, yes, I will stay in business for ninety days or any length of time.
Would it be fair to say that that's the intent, though, of the whole program? Is to assist businesses so they will stay in business, and that we can, you know, count on their continued participation in the community in the future? I mean, that's, wouldn't you agree that's the whole point?
Yes, I do. I agree that's the whole point, and that's what we're really trying to, to accomplish with the program. You may have noticed in the, in some of the requirements, they do need to have a, a level of proof that they've been in business somewhere in the month of May, meaning that they didn't close up shop in, in March, and they're kind of just sitting in the, in the background, and then they apply for this, and they, they haven't done anything since then. So if they've made payroll, if they've paid their rent, if they've done any kind of business activity in the month of May and can prove that, that indicates to us that they're, they're moving their way and making their way towards trying to be in business. Of course, the greatest thing would be if they say, hey, we're in business, and we drive by, and it sure looks like they're in business.
Hey, thanks a lot, Mr. Smith. Sure appreciate it.
You bet.
I have Counselor Springsteen, and then Harrison, and then I want to go back to Counselor Abel on a potential amendment, as well as anybody else who has some amendments, so we can maybe move into that, that phase. Counselor Springsteen?
A couple considerations. I was talking to a fellow counselor in another municipality, and one of the things that they've required is that businesses certify that revenues are down at least thirty-five percent as, as a result of COVID. So, but for government action, this business wouldn't have been affected or harmed. And so I think that's a consideration here, because there may be many, many businesses who, who would like to have access to this money, but who were not really affected directly by this. So I'm just wondering if there's some way we can find a way to include that. I wanted to address, again, we heard the statistics about how many Hispanics, blacks, Asians we have in this city, and address somehow how we can proportionately distribute this money to businesses of that nature, and maybe add to that women-run businesses, women-minority-run businesses. We want to make sure we're not being discriminatory. And then to that end, the, the seventy-five K in revenues required, that seems quite high to me. Is that, in some way, being discriminatory about businesses who need access to this money? And maybe we can look back to the, again, revenues are down thirty-five percent as a result of COVID. And then, finally, how are we preventing cronyism in how we're distributing this money and how, how that gets decided? All right, thanks.
You bet. As far as the economic devastation, we don't have a percentage on that dollar, on those dollars yet. But they are required to identify the fact that, that they've been substantially either closed or had to alter their business model very substantially for COVID. Essentially, what they would do is they talk about what they did in twenty nineteen, what they would have expected to do in, in March and April of this year, and whatever that difference is, is the, is the loss between the two, and that loss needs to be substantial in excess of the five thousand dollars, which is the minimum of the, of the qualifying grants. With regard to minority-owned businesses, we certainly can do a lot of reach-out. We do a lot of communications with all of our folks, but we certainly can make special reach-outs to all of the chambers of commerce that are specifically serving the minority-owned business community. We do know those that have been certified for, through the state, as disadvantaged business enterprises or DDEs as well. So we know those businesses that exist in Lakewood. So we know those businesses that exist in Lakewood. We will do everything we can to make certain every business is aware of the grant program so that they can certainly get their application in. If you were to pass it tonight, our thought is, is that we will stand the program up and have it ready to go tomorrow, the next day at the very latest, so that all of the council people that are on this call can go out to the businesses within their wards and let them know high and wide to apply for this, on the application program. We're anticipating it being at the beginning of next week, that there'd be about a three-day window to get your application in there. So plenty of opportunity to reach out to lots and lots of folks along the way there. As far as avoiding cronyism, the way that we've got this set up is that once you do your application, it comes in and it gets put into a spreadsheet where we can verify all of the things that we need to verify. One is that you've got a physical address in Lakewood, that you've got an EIN number, that you've got, that, you know, that you're devastated would be another qualifier. There's a list of qualifiers that are in there, and we would verify those for those particular businesses. Once that occurs, we would take off all of the things in the spreadsheet that specifically identify each individual business. So in other words, the name of the business, their address and whatnot, and then they would just simply be identified by a generated number for their application. So they'd be application 225, that sort of a thing, as we weighted against the rubric of, 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 you know, the things that are on that rubric, and those are listed off there in A. So once those went into place, that would be the one, then we would reassociate that, and then we would determine who those, those folks are. So there would be people watching us through the process, make sure that we did it that way, but there will also be people that are doing the assessment and wouldn't know which business it is. Now, you know, for the most part, there wouldn't be any way to tell that. And then as far as the random sort of drawing there at the, at the back end for the additional random drawing grants, that would also be digitally done. It's similar to drawing a name out of a hat or a business number, excuse me, application number out of a hat, but it's done digitally. We would also witness that, and then we would reassociate those businesses with their application number, and that's how, that's who would be receiving those random drawing grants. So that's one level that we've done to try to make certain that there is no putting a finger on the scale to identify which business might, might be in the hopper for that. The random drawing is really designed so that there isn't that. It's not a matter of being able to say, "Well, I kind of like, you know, a ice cream shop more than I like a hairdresser," or that sort of a thing. It's really designed so that it randomly selects those folks on a very random basis.
Counselor Harrison?
Thank you. I have a couple of different things. So because of the way you defined the 70, no, the way they had to have a financial loss, businesses like Walmart or King Supers or whatnot would not be eligible for this, so they're not even going to be interested in doing this. This is going to probably be reaching out to specifically those businesses that have really been struggling, our small businesses. And right now, I want to say a personal thank you to Robert Smith for making the change in the language from, originally, we had 50 full-time employees, moving it down to 25, because that really does address our local businesses that really need this help. So I want to tell him thank you very much for that. That's a big deal for me. The other thing that I wanted to add is, by using a less finite definition of who might be eligible for this business loan or grant, excuse me, is less discriminatory rather than more discriminatory. So that would allow women-owned minority businesses to apply as well as something that's not that. So we've got the larger, the, or the more vague we are in our description, I think that allows more people to apply. And given the description, the way that Robert just identified how an application would be processed, I think it eliminates that idea of cronyism, and I want to commend our staff for coming up with that. I think that's a great way of handling things, and it really shows Lakewood doesn't believe in cronyism. I think we really try very hard to be equal and fair in what we do. And then I think that's, that's, those are my comments. I think, Charlie, you had one that you wanted to make later on, but I wanted to tell you that it's in the language right now to drop it from 50 to 25. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. So as of right now, we still have the, go ahead, Mr. Smith here.
I realize that somehow I missed through the process here, addressing Councilmember Gutwijn's concerns on what she had put forward in terms of perhaps an amendment and whatnot. I don't know that it requires amendment, but certainly we can make forms available in the Spanish language if that's necessary or needed or wanted or desired, and we can reach out to any number of folks that can help us reach those communities along the way. The only one that, that becomes a little bit difficult is, is because it's an internet-based form, if you enter information in Spanish into the, into the form, the computer starts to auto-correct it as if it were English. And so it's very difficult to work that way, but we certainly can make a workaround of that. With regard to the phone number, our phone number will be on everything. Anybody, you know, regardless of what, where they're at or what kind of business they have, always welcome to call, always, we're happy to help get them into the process and get, get applied and that sort of a thing. So just, so you're aware of that. We certainly can do all of those things with that one minor exception, and then we certainly can reach out to whomever we want.
Great. Okay, so it looks like I'll go to Counselor Johnson here in a minute, just to keep track of everything. So we have the amendment that Counselor Gutwijn talked about, as well as going back to Counselor Abel after Counselor Johnson to, to talk about where he was going a couple minutes ago. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Frankly, I just want to thank you, Robert. I like the way it is structured. After I read all of the other ways that other municipalities have been doing this, I think ours is frankly the best in a model that they should use. Thank you. I know a lot of time went into this.
Mr. Smith, a question too that came up, and I think this is important for transparency, is I'm a small business owner in the city. I wouldn't be eligible for this, correct? Anybody, any employee or anybody who is paid by the city is excluded from this program?
It's a great point. We haven't written that in there yet, but I guess we will now.
Well, I'll have to defer to council about that, but just, just to clarify, and if council wants to do that, so, I mean, when, when this brought up about different things, that should certainly, I think, be part of it.
Just, we just hadn't contemplated it, to be quite frank with you. We, we made sure that we excluded all other government organizations, so, for example, the water districts or the special districts and those, those kinds of organizations, while they may be, all of the other qualifications in Lakewood, they wouldn't be eligible for these.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Abel, back to you, sir.
Thank you. Most of it said. My remaining concern is that just having a Lakewood address doesn't make you a Lakewood business. You can have a post office mail drop, or not a post office mail drop, a mail drop at any number of places around the city and list it as your business address. I want to make sure that this goes to people who are indeed invested in the city and are not actually residents of, or do business here. For instance, would be an athletic trainer that might have a drop box, you know, and then use our parks or something for the training and for the address where they make their money, conduct their business, but not really have that investment in Lakewood. So I would like it to, and I'm not sure how to word it, but I would like to exclude people who are not renting, leasing, or who don't own a physical property in Lakewood, not just a drop box, not a food truck that drives in from their restaurant in Denver, not a pop-up shop that all of a sudden appears in one of our parking lots. And then if you'll recall, we don't allow it anymore, but for instance, is there was a fellow who was selling vape products out of a mobile van. So I don't want mobile businesses collecting this money either. That's my rationale. Mr. Smith has done a really good job, and he's really clever with the wording in these things, so I would leave it to him to make the final choice of words, but I think you get my drift, Mr. Smith.
Counselor Abel, to that, and maybe Mr. Cox or Mr. Smith, could you just say that you have to be domiciled within the city of Lakewood?
Domicile means a home.
Okay, so building off of that, everything minus just a PO box?
Or, you know, if you're, if you're teaching softball in four or five different towns and you're using a Lakewood park facility, you don't qualify, really. So I just want to cover all the bases to make sure that whoever gets this money has an investment in Lakewood.
I, I do very much hear what you're saying, sir, and we'll have to think about the language just to, to make certain that we, we work that up very well. We certainly can exclude businesses that are mobile or, you know, on trucks or that sort of thing. Right now, it says that you must have a physical address in Lakewood and that that be your principal place of conducting your business. But in the example you just gave of a potentially a physical trainer, an athletic trainer, you know, using their home as the place where they, they collect the checks and then they do their work at a variety of gyms around the area, that's a very different sort of a thing, and I'm not certain how we, how we work our language around that, but I think between Mr. Cox and I, we've come up with something here. I hear what you're saying.
You two are clever fellows, so I trust that you can do so. Thank you.
So Mr. Smith and Mr. Cox, if you want to give that a thought, I'm going to go with Mayor Protem, Skilling, and so it sounds like we still have that amendment, as well as Counselor Gutwijn's amendment, and then if I need to make an amendment to exclude city employees or those paid by the city as being eligible, I can do that as well. Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm adding that to the list. That would be number six. If I might just make one brief comment to both Mr. B, or Counselor Bida and Counselor Abel, the federal programs, especially PPP, has a very long list of boxes you must check under significant penalties, that you must certify certain things. So to Mr. Bida's point, if Mr. Cox or Mr. Smith, you certify that the business intends to stay, stay in business, you know, a lot of those companies take those certifications very seriously, and whether they can actually, I know personally of some businesses have declined PPP because they did not know whether they could live up to a lot of those certifications, and they wanted to be above board with it because the Fed said, "We're going to prosecute." So maybe to address Mr. Abel and Mr. Bida's concerns, we add those things, just the certifications amongst others on the checklist. That would be my comment to that. I have, Mayor, do you want me to go through all of the amendments first, just to recap them? Or would you like me to read the motion and then recap the amendment?
Let me just go to Mr. Cox. What's the cleanest way?
Well, it wasn't clear on whether Counselors, or Mayor Protem, Skilling had other amendments that we haven't talked about. We just talked about the ones that have come up tonight, and to recap those, or were there others that you had on your list, Mr. Skilling?
I have identified potentially six amendments that I've written down, listening to everybody, but I haven't worded them or anything. I'm just writing them down, keeping track.
Sure. I, I think it might be helpful to everybody if we went through them each summarily, so we knew what was likely to change before you, you get your motion out there, and then we could take them one at a time as, as appropriate.
Ten-four.
So the first, the first I have tracks with Mr. Smith's presentation, the first one was the typo in section two on page three, that we would change the 1 million to 3 million in the body of the ordinance. That was a typo. The second one was, there was the missing paragraph in page six that needs to be inserted that was done in the presentation, but I don't believe that exists in the pending ordinance. That's the one where it explains the breakdown of how the 3 million will go into various grants. That was the, the missing paragraph. The third one, we had Counselor Gutwijn's, if that needs to be an amendment, there was the, I guess it's one amendment with three subparts. Numbers four and five are the ones I just mentioned, to Counselor Bida's point about doing, having some language that the business intends to stay a going concern, or at least certifying that they will. Mr. Abel's point about the physical location of the business not being a PO box. And then the sixth one would be the mayor's about, which I think addressed maybe Counselor Springsteen's point about whether employees of the city would be eligible. That's what I have for the recap.
Any questions on that or comments? Okay, so, Mr. Smith, Mr. Cox, we don't have, you know, we used to be able to kind of take a recess and work on language. It's a little bit different now. I don't think we have muzak when we go to break here to keep people busy. So do you have anything to comment on that now, and then I can go back to Counselor Springsteen and Counselor Bida have their hands up?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of thoughts on a couple of these proposed amendments. Obviously, the, the first two that are omissions or the incorrect amount, we'll clean that up regardless, whether there's an amendment on that. Council will obviously need to decide on Counselor Gutwijn's suggestion. In terms of, I guess, the accessibility issue in Counselor Gutwijn's suggested amendment and the city employee or city official issue that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, I, I guess it comes down to the, to the council's comfort level with the, lack of a better term, officialness of that. You could state on the record tonight, as you adopt this ordinance, that it is the policy of the city, that it'll be available to everybody and so on. Now, Counselor Gutwijn has requested some specific language, so that may still want, you may still want to go into the ordinance with that. But as far as the city employees would go, again, I think you could state for the record that's, that's not to be included, but you're here, you have the amendments, other amendments to deal with. If you, if you want to address each one of those, most of them would be pretty simple to, to work up for us, as they've been described so far.
Thank you. So you're, you're saying in legislative intent or something along those lines?
Something along those lines. It's not a disqualifier necessarily, you know, something like accessibility, that's a matter of policy, and, and it makes everybody eligible, it doesn't affect anybody's eligibility limited. But again, because of Counselor Gutwijn's specific suggestions, we may want to take that up as a proposed amendment. And it's probably safer to do that in all instances, just to save a little bit of time and trouble on some of these.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Springsteen?
Yeah, I, I didn't hear anything about my proposal that a business has to certify revenues are down at least 35% as a result of COVID, and so I just wondered if we could add that to the list. Thanks.
And Mr. Smith, you did address that in some manner, that you have to stipulate, and I guess my question is, where did 35% come from? Is that through copying through some of the federal relief, or is that just a number or?
Other jurisdictions.
I believe Counselor Springsteen indicated it was from some other jurisdictions. Right now, as it's before you right now, you just have to certify that you've had a substantial loss. It doesn't have a number associated with it. I think what she's suggesting, I don't mean to put words in her mouth, but I think what she's suggesting is that we put a number on it, and the number that she's suggesting is 30 or 35%.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bida?
Thank you. Just on the question about- Um, just on the question about, um, employees or those receiving money from the city, I think we need to be a little bit careful how we word that because we don't want to exclude businesses who may have subcontracted with the city, done work for the city, hadn't received, have received money or work done. We don't want to exclude them. So I think we want to be more specific and say elected officials or employees of the city or, and their, or their spouses. Because I think we need to include spouses in there, um, as well. So those would be the ones that would be ineligible, um, as opposed to someone who just has received money from the city for work or whatever. We don't want to exclude them. Well, that's my suggestion. That's all.
Yeah. No, I think that helps clarify. A- and I can come back because I do have a question about those because if, and maybe you just say as the primary employee of the city, because if you do have a spouse that does have a business with the city, they could be really struggling too, right? So I, we, we can discuss. I, it's a tough one and maybe we're going down a...
I think it's a dangerous thing. I mean, I, yeah, sure, of course they're going to be, that could be a possibility, but, um, you can see the problem if a spouse of, if somebody on city council gets a thirty-thousand-dollar grant, I mean, it's just not going to look good.
Certainly. A- and I think councils certainly differ. And I mean, I just, we have potentially nine hundred employees and a lot of other people that do work for the city. And so, I mean, how do you, I, I don't know. That's food for thought, neither here or there for right now. Um, Counselor Gutwine?
Just briefly, I would like to go ahead and at least propose including that language or similar language to make it officially part of the program that we are, you know, the outreach, Spanish language accessibility, and then also, um, not that it's just available on, on request, but that it's available from the moment the application's open. And the reason why is this is only open for three days. That is such a short window. And by the time you get the application back, what if you have a question? I mean, I think that we need to have it open and ready from the beginning. Um, and then also that workaround that you mentioned about, um, that if you type, it's going to auto correct. And so, you know, if there's a way that they can just email the application as an attachment or something, I don't know, I'm sure that you all will be able to figure that out. But I just want to make sure that it is officially a part of the program and that we, um, and including the outreach. Um, in terms of the, the interesting question that Mayor Paul brought up, I think at the very least, um, we need to make sure that no city council, no city council spouses get any of this. So let's just make sure that's official in there.
Counselor Franks?
Thanks, Mayor Paul. Um, I had a couple of questions and maybe, I, I don't know if we know which municipality, but I'm real concerned about a specific percentage being put in when I don't have any data points to show, you know, obviously we have some businesses that are higher margin, we have some businesses lower margin, some may have gotten rent relief from their, um, you know, from maybe who they're leasing from. There's a lot of variables and setting that percentage, I think, may, um, inadvertently, I, I appreciate the sentiment. I certainly know what we're trying to do is we want this money to go to folks who have been the most seriously impacted by orders that were outside of their control. But I'm concerned here tonight that we're proposing a specific percentage when I wasn't given any data points to support that percentage versus a different percentage. And so without that, I kind of need to lean on that kind of rubric that's been talked about, that that's going to help us ferret out in, in, in a fair and honest way, who's been the most impacted and where the money can do the most good. So unless someone can speak to why thirty-five percent and how we're sure that doesn't do as much harm as it does good, I'm not sure I could be in support of that tonight.
Counselor Springsteen, do you want to try to address that?
Yeah, um, I guess I, I'm just trying to give some definition to what is a substantial loss. So if somebody is only down five percent in revenues, should, should they be as eligible as somebody who's down fifty percent, for instance? And so I understand your discomfort with a particular percentage and I'm going off what somebody in another municipality told me, but what, I guess I'm just looking for some kind of definition for what is a substantial loss and a business who had minor losses versus what is much more significant, how do we define that is, is what I'm looking for. So thanks for your comments. I, I, I agree with you. It's, it's hard to define.
Thanks, Counselor. I'll go back to Ms. Counselor Franks.
Well, thanks. And, and Counselor Springsteen, I appreciate that. An example that I'll give is if I have a consultancy business and my consultancy rate is two hundred dollars an hour and I'm down fifty percent, that is much different than maybe someone who operates a different type of service business that doesn't have. So that's where my real concern comes in, that, um, without having some of those, uh, being able to slice it. So I appreciate, I think we're trying to do the same thing. I just don't know that putting that in place without other constraints around that accomplishes the goal. So, but, but thank you for, for being cognizant of, we all want this money to do the most good in the community.
Counselor Vincent, you've been quiet tonight.
Um, I, I think the point I was going to make, I think that, uh, Counselor Franks went ahead and said it, when you, if, if I grasped it, when you put percentages on things, there's really no context for that. So fifty percent of fifty dollars can be twenty-five dollars, but fifty percent of, you know, a hundred thousand is, is fifty thousand. So when you put percentages, it doesn't really equate sometimes to the monetary pain. Um, and I do appreciate too, um, Counselor Springsteen, what she, what she's trying to accomplish. So I guess that's a long way of attempting to land the plane, that I agree exactly with what, uh, Counselor Franks was bringing up with the, uh, consultant piece of it. You have to be careful when you do those sort of things.
Counselor Johnson, then Harrison, then Abel.
Well, Mayor, I would really like to commend you that you thought of, uh, council, that we should be careful about making sure that we are not receiving any of this money. Um, I appreciate that. And I like the idea that it's expanded to spouses. And I'm wondering if we should also just say to, uh, council members and their families, you've seen how many people have gotten in trouble because their kids have been awarded different contracts. Um, certainly for council, I think it would be appropriate to expand it to families as well. Thank you for thinking of it. That's a good thought.
Thank you. Uh, where was, uh, Counselor Harrison and I think Counselor Abel?
Actually, I think Abel was first, but I'll take it real quick. Um, Robert, I think that you, in the process itself, said that businesses needed to submit some sort of financial documentation. Am I correct?
Yeah, they need to, uh, certify that their, their dollars from last year are that way. We're, we're not in the process of, uh, requiring, uh, tax forms or that sort of a thing. They certified that. We have some other means of checking in on what they've done for audits and that sort of a thing. We think we can get a good handle on it, but it does have a caveat in the application that says if we need additional application information, that you have to provide it, otherwise your application's not...
So that would get, we, we could get documentation if we felt like we needed it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Counselor Abel?
Um, I agree with Counselor Woman, uh, Franks that percentages can be relative, but the word substantial is much more relative and much more vague. So I don't think we can just let that word lay there. Uh, we don't necessarily have to put a percentage on it, but I'd like to see it qualified a little better because vagueness, uh, can really cripple any legislation we do. Thank you.
Counselor, do you have a better word?
Again, Tim and Bob and Robert are, uh, have all the clever solutions, so.
If I may, Mayor, I'm sorry. Uh, effectively, the, the bottom end of it is a five thousand dollar, uh, loan on the qualifying loan. So it would have to be a loss of at least five thousand dollars, otherwise they won't be able to make the calculation work. We can be very explicit in terms of saying five thousand dollars. Do we know that five thousand dollars is substantial enough? Uh, that's a question you may be able to answer, but we may be able to do it with the total dollars because it's capped at thirty thousand. If, uh, you know, you've lost a million dollars, let's say, the most you can get out of it is thirty thousand dollars. So it would have to be fairly substantial that you would want to pursue this process in order to get those kinds of dollars involved. So if, uh, if the bottom needs to be higher than five thousand, we certainly can do that. Obviously, we know it can't get any higher than thirty thousand. So, uh, if thirty thousand is whatever percentage of your losses, that's still a substantial amount of loss, in my opinion, and the five thousand is the, is the floor right now.
Counselor Abel?
Okay. Thank you. And I, I think you point out well that substantial is, depends on who's ox is getting gored. So, uh, that is probably something we should leave up to the folks who decide where these things go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, um, it's going back to you, uh, just for clarification. So why don't we read this in and then start taking a crack at some amendments?
I move for the adoption of ordinance O dash twenty twenty dash sixteen on final reading.
Second.
Okay. So we now have a motion in a second. According to Mr. Cox, the typos can be corrected, uh, without an amendment? Or since we're all in the room?
Uh, yeah, I, I think it's, it's worth doing, a million here, a million there, and it's, uh, it's, it's a substantial amount of money, so I would be clear about that. Uh, before we go any further, could I make one suggestion that I think is relative to, uh, probably three of these proposed, uh, amendments? Uh, you know, as the administrators of the program, we want certainty, certainly, but we also, uh, are going to need some flexibility, some discretion in the close call cases. For example, uh, as Counselor Johnson said, it might be, uh, the council's wishes to include families. Well, there's going to be a question somewhere in there. Is this part of your family? Is it your brother-in-law, your stepson? Uh, you know, there'll be nuances as we get further away from the core family and trying to define who's in the family and who's not can be tricky. Physical location that Counselor Abel was asking about. We're having trouble defining what it means to be a Lakewood business. And I think in those instances, if we were to add, uh, even a, a simple sentence somewhere in the eligibility section that just says, um, uh, final, or determination of, uh, eligibility is, is up to the, uh, committee and is, is a, a final decision. Uh, so then ultimately you reach a point where you say, this one I believe is eligible because of this, this one seems to be just outside the lines because of that, and, and you have that discretion, uh, because some, some decision has to be made, uh, on some of those close calls. So that, that's one way of addressing, not, not to substitute for the, uh, points being made, but to clarify that ultimately, even where it's not clear, someone has to make that call.
Hmm. Yeah, that's fair. Okay. So Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to start with the typo and the missing paragraph? Those are easy.
Sure. So I would offer the following amendment, that the typo in section two of the ordinance, page three, that lists one million, be changed to three million. And also add in the missing paragraph on page six that was part of Mr. Smith's presentation, which gave the breakdown of the three million dollar grant.
Is there a second?
Sorry, second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll call this amendment one, clarable. Um, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Passes ten i, zero, nay.
I think for the, for the next one, maybe just have Counselor, she's got the language there that, that she had proposed, so maybe just have Counselor Gutwine, uh, propose the amendment?
Counselor Gutwine, please.
Thank you. Should I include the part, I said, ensure all businesses in Lakewood have an opportunity to apply for grant. One, accessibility, require all forms and information in English and Spanish. Two, outreach, require outreach to minority-owned businesses and opportunity zones. Three, assistance, include a phone number on application for questions about grant. And that's all. I can forward that again, I, I have that sent to you, Robert. I can send that to Tim as well.
I, I do believe...
So you all have the language?
Yeah, I believe you send it to all the council as well.
And I did. I can, I'll resend it to everyone just so that you have it in front of you as well.
Is there a second? Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I can second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second on that. Is there any discussion? Uh, hold on, Mr. Cox, you...
Just, I think I'm unmuted. Just one word, I heard, uh, Counselor Gutwine say all Lakewood businesses. I might suggest saying all eligible Lakewood businesses, because there will clearly be some businesses that are not eligible.
Thank you.
Sure.
So do I need to modify that then?
Well, let's just make sure that our clerk and everybody has that clarification, Mr. Cox, and just go ahead and modify it.
Re-read the whole thing?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Ensure all eligible Lakewood businesses have an opportunity to apply for the grant. One, accessibility, require all forms and information in English and Spanish. Two, outreach, require outreach to minority-owned businesses and opportunity zones. Three, assistance, include a phone number on application for questions about the grant.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem, you want to second that?
I will second that.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Please cast your votes. Looks like it passes ten i's, zero nays. Next amendment, are we two?
I, I think I would skip to, I want to go to what, the number seven. I apologize, Counselor Springsteen, for leaving that off the first go around. So number seven, Counselor Springsteen had proposed the thirty-five percent and just with Counselor Gutwine, maybe, uh, Counselor Springsteen wants to make that amendment, so I don't screw that up.
Counselor Springsteen?
So, so the amendment for the language is what you're talking about?
The thirty, um, the, replacing the current language of substantial with the, the... The 30, replacing the current language of substantial with the 35%, I believe, is what. But I don't want to mess up your words, that's why I was.
Right. So what I had said is that businesses have to certify that their revenues are down by at least 35% as a result of COVID.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Gutwine?
Thank you. I definitely appreciate the point, unlike other people have mentioned in this discussion. The additional concern I would have, though, with including a percent is that I'm worried about how businesses are going to be able to easily quantify all of their losses and tying them directly related to COVID. I think it might be challenging and make this a little bit of a harder process to go through. I think that documenting that they have been, you know, experiencing significant loss or the language that we have, I feel that that will be sufficient. And I want to make sure that this is an easy process for people to go through.
And I would just echo, you know, I appreciate that too. But to Counselor Frank's point, I don't have a data set of how another community came up with the 35%. And I just don't know if that's, you know, relatable to the city of Lakewood. You know, I could apply that to my own personal experience with my businesses, but I just don't know for others. So I can't support that, but thank you.
Counselor Bita?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points. First of all, this issue of data points, let's talk about that. We're making a distinction between different types of industries here. We have no data points on that, not a single one. Those were done, you know, and I talked to Mr. Smith about this. And, you know, they looked at it just in terms of talking to businesses, kind of getting a feel for which businesses are going to be able to recover quicker than others. But it's all kind of a guess. So, you know, this is the same thing. You know, we're guessing. What's significant? 30%, 35%, 30, 20? I don't know. I mean, pick a number. But I think, I don't think that it's unreasonable to say you have to experience some loss. Secondly, and we don't have data points to substantiate that, but we're legislating here, and that necessarily is a, you know, is a guess. You're drawing a line somewhere. That's what we have to do, draw a line based upon what we think is reasonable and fair. Secondly, as far as being difficult for businesses, I guarantee you, these businesses are going to know whether they, how much money they've lost as a result of the virus. Today, they had to close the door, and their revenue stopped. You better believe they have a real good idea, and their books are going to show it, their bank accounts are going to show it. So I don't, this idea that, oh, it's going to be too hard for them to determine, I can't, I can't agree with that argument. I, these businesses, they know darn well what they're losing. So I think it's a reasonable proposal. I think it's much better than to say substantial. I think there needs, I think, you know, to Counselor Abel's point, I mean, we're just not comfortable with something that vague. So, you know, as lawyers, I think we like to have some language that's a little more specific and a little less able to be manipulated. So I think I'm in support of that proposal and that motion. That's all.
Counselor Gutwine, to the motion?
I appreciate that, and I definitely hear, you know, all this is unprecedented. So it's not like we have a bunch of previous pandemics to compare this to, that we can gather a bunch of information. But I actually received that information about just the challenge of, provide, oh my goodness, I'm sorry, now my kids are yelling in the background. If you heard that, welcome to the real world, everyone. Sorry. So anyway, I did get that from a business owner who's watching this. And so, you know, I think you're right, 100%. Businesses know what they're down. I think it's just a matter of pulling that together in three days and being able to provide all the documentation that shows a precise amount of 35%. What if you're 31%? What if you're 32? What if you're 27? And so, you know, that, but yeah, I mean, maybe if we had more time, we could figure out a way to provide that precision and that accountability that I think that you're looking for, which I definitely appreciate. I just don't know if this is the best way to do it. So, thank you.
Mayor, can I respond? I just want to say, we're not asking them to prove it. We're just saying certify it. Just represent to us that your losses are this amount or greater. You don't have to go through and do an audit on your books. We're not asking. We're just asking them to say, yeah, I've lost this, I've lost that amount and more. Certify it. That's all we're asking. I don't think that's unreasonable. And again, the idea is we're trying to target those businesses who need it the most and who we're going to do the most good with. And I think this is a way of, one way, among other things, of identifying those. So I think it falls right in the line with what we're trying to do. That's all.
And I mean, that's where we really could probably spend all night talking about this, because why does a business that's not 30% down need it? Or why should it be 40 or 50%, right? So when you start trying to find the sliding scale, I mean, the verbiage, we had our wordsmith there try to take a look at it and came up with a word, but then, you know, came back to where we're at. And so, you know, it's unprecedented. It's not easy. But there's a lot of different things that could move here or work here. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. Counselwoman Springsteen, would you be open to having the amount 30%? I actually support what you're trying to do. And I'm wondering if that would help make it more palatable for some of the rest of you if it was 30?
I don't think that, I'm going off of what somebody told me in another municipality about 35%. Honestly, I don't know how they came up with that percentage. But I think it's a good idea for us to try to define in some way what a substantial loss is. Because some people might say 5% is a substantial loss. Others might say 50%. And so do we want to give some kind of definition to this? I know every business is different. But is it fair if one business has only had a 5% loss that they should have equal accessibility to this money as somebody who has almost lost their business? And so that's what I'm trying to define. I'm open to suggestion. I think substantial loss is a very, very vague term. Thanks.
Counselor Vincent?
I may not be correct, but would it be correct to call the question?
If there's a second, I see a second from Counselor Harrison. So there's a motion and a second to call the question. So we need to take a vote?
On the question, correct?
No, on calling the question.
On calling the question, I mean.
There's a motion and a second to call the question. Please cast your votes. And so that passes. Counselor Springsteen, can you please vote?
I guess I'm not clear on what we're voting on. Can you explain?
Certainly. We're calling the question, which means we're going to end debate and vote on your amendment.
Okay.
But this isn't the amendment vote. This is just stopping the discussion to just go directly to the vote of your amendment. Okay. So that passes, is that nine i's, one nay, the nay being Counselor Abel? Okay, the original motion on the floor is to adopt a threshold of 35% per Counselor Springsteen. Motion and second question was called. Please cast your votes. And that motion fails. Looks like seven nays, three yays, the nays being Paul, Harrison, Franks, Vincent, Gutwine, and Skilling. So I think this brings us to kind of the nepotism type or whatever that is. And I was thinking, do we have that codified in our code for other things, Tim, that we could just pull for this program?
We definitely have anti-nepotism language. I'm trying to remember where it is and what it governs. It's pretty basic language that could be transferred to a different purpose like this. I'm not remembering whether it's in the policies, procedures, or in the code at this juncture. But the particular language doesn't bother me. I know we can find a good example and include it in there if you simply wanted to have an amendment to add appropriate anti-nepotism language. And if you wanted to find it further than that, to specify which, what level of relationship you're trying to get to, that's fine too. But if you want to keep it simple, we can just find a good language to include it as an anti-nepotism provision.
So to that point, this passes on an emergency. It becomes law, basically, tomorrow. So we would have to get that done ASAP. So I guess what I would suggest is to find it, but, and I'll ask somebody else, maybe the Mayor Pro Tem, to make the motion.
Yeah.
Would be to exclude employees and immediate family as well as city council and city council families from this? Is that kind of in line, or?
So city officials and employees and their immediate families?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it goes back to what I was saying. There's still going to be a question, perhaps, potentially, for someone who's of a slightly different relationship. But ultimately, somebody has to make that decision and say, you're eligible or you're not.
So then we'll put that in at the next amendment, that kind of blanket language that says that. So Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to take a crack at that? Or I could just say, so moved?
Well, I can parrot just what you and Mr. Cox just said, which is, the amendment would be any city official, employee, and their immediate families would not be eligible for this grant program.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Discussion, Counselor Bita, your hands up.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that's a great idea, is to track the language that we have on that. I was just looking in our charter to see if I could find it. I didn't. But we need to move it along, so I'm good with the proposal. I'm good with it.
Great. So there's a motion and a second. No more discussions. Please cast your votes. That passes 10 i's, zero nays. Okay, that, our amendments?
Well, I just, the only, so on this list, I totaled up seven. Counselor Bita's with the intending to stay in business and Counselor Abel's physical locale in the city of Lakewood. We have those two remaining.
Counselor Abel, and I'll ask Mr. Smith. I think, yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. So we were going to work on that language. Did you come up with anything?
Well, we have a series of certifications at the back end of the application as it's currently drafted. And my intent would be to add another certification on there. We need to codify it into the eligibility. But essentially, that businesses are willing to certify that it is their intent to stay in business for some length of time that council would like to determine, 90 days, the next year, whatever that may be. But that is their intent, and they would agree or not agree to that. If they agree to it and then fail to live up to that, gives us the opportunity to go back and try to claw back the grant. We could also put it explicitly in that agreement. I agree that we, it is our, you know, intent to stay in business for the next 90 days. If we do not do so, the city, we understand the city will claw back that, the grant money for that received in this program. That would be that one. Are we attempting to do this at the same time or two different motions?
Well, let's start with that one, since we have that on the floor. So I'll go to Counselor Bita to talk about that.
I think that's fine. I think 90 days is reasonable. I think the language is reasonable. Understanding it may be difficult to enforce it. I mean, we could get real complicated and say, you're holding it in trust for that period of time and so that we can try to get around bankruptcy rules. And we could really go through all kinds of gyrations, but I don't think it's, and I don't, I'm not sure it's worth the effort, and I don't think it would probably work anyway. So I think just the certification is enough, and warning them, these are federal funds. You're making representations in order to get federal funds. I don't think you want to lie about that. If you do, you're doing it at your own risk. Pretty good warning for me. That's good enough for me. That's for me. I don't know. The elephant's scared, isn't he? Thank you. Thank you for your thoughts there, Mr. Smith. Appreciate it.
Counselor Franks?
I just wanted to add that I do think that having the intent statement, we don't know what the future's going to bring, so I certainly don't want to do a period longer than 90 days. We don't know if there'll be a second wave and having to tighten things back down again, which could further impact the business. So I can be in support of that intent statement and 90 days.
Okay, so let's finalize that language. And so it would just, Mr. Cox, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor. I know you're making some, getting some momentum here. You may remember several years ago with the construction of the light rail line, there was a need for RTD to acquire some property and move some businesses. The city had a program back at that time, a business relocation program, where folks demonstrated to the best of their ability the need for their business to relocate because of the construction. And I think only a couple took advantage, but they did. And we can look at that language and see if there's something useful in there, so we can, again, be consistent in how we word it. I just don't remember what it said, except that there was a provision requiring folks to, again, certify that their intent is to stay in business. And then I would simply suggest that we say, I understand that the city may pursue recovery in life, so that we have that discretion if the business burns down or someone is taken ill, that we're not committed to going after the funds.
Well said. Yeah, I think that's a good way with the may. Counselor Abel? Oh, you're not unmuted. There you go.
Or you're the one that muted me again.
I think going with the intent is clear enough. It's all on videotape. I suppose we're saving this for posterity. So, and the group that administers this money knows what we're discussing and what we're thinking about. And I would extend that also to my proposed amendment. We all know what we're getting at. And, uh, the, the folks who will be distributing the money are aware of that as well, and they have a lot of integrity. So I think we can just depend on them to, uh, to handle it according to our intent.
Is that suitable for you, Counselor Bida? Okay, so I'm seeing a yes there. So I, I think that then without Mr. Cox saying that we need to make that an affirmative, Counselor, or, uh, Mr. Smith, and you know that those are the two provisions that we want added to the back end of the criteria.
I've heard that, loud and clear.
Is there anybody that disagrees with that? Okay, so I think that covers all of the amendments. And so we could redo that motion as amended, please. Charlie's already shown his cards.
Hang on, hang on. Okay. I move for the adoption of ordinance O dash twenty twenty dash sixteen as amended on final reading.
Second.
Right, motion and second, any more discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. That's really cool, congratulations, that passes ten, zero. So thank you, council, thank you to the, the staff for rushing this through and getting this all done. And, and we're excited to get it out to the community, so very nice. All right, general business, the only thing that I have.
Mayor, can I ask one question before we lose Mr. Smith? I apologize. Is there, just because I know we're all going to blast this out as soon as we possibly can with the timelines to, uh, communities on lists, social media, all of that. What's our timeline and what is the, what's it going to look like that we can grab to, to push out, whether it's on newsletter subscribers or whatever it is? What's that going to look like? Can you explain that to council so that, to some of the concerns we heard earlier, that this gets out there to as many people in the most efficient way? Before we lose you, Mr. Smith.
You bet, that sounds rather fatalistic to lose me, but, uh, hopefully I'm not lost. But at any rate, uh, the, the plan right at the moment is, is that we've been working in the background on a web landing page. So all of this information will be on that webpage, just so, uh, everyone's aware. You can translate any of our normal web pages into, uh, any of five different languages, including Spanish with a click of a button. That's available to all of our webpages, including the one that will outline this, this program in here. We will have on that same webpage, um, uh, a PDF of the application form, so that you can download that PDF, know what answers you would like to put in there. And then when the window opens up, you're, you are able to answer those questions through the portal, uh, at your, at your leisure over that three or so days. What you'll be able to receive is, as soon as I'm able to make the changes that we talked about tonight, get those into the webpage, get them into the document, which we will also translate into Spanish. Uh, when we have all those documents, I'll send out copies of those to council, um, available so that you can either copy and paste the language and put them into the, uh, various publications you have or into emails if you would like. Um, or direct people to the link on the, on the website so they can review all of that information. We'll also take that opportunity to email out to all of the various lists that we have, as well as we'll put out a special, um, we call it our news blast or our business, uh, listing. We've got about three thousand or so, uh, subscribers on that list. We'll put it out on that with a special edition here in the next day or so. So the timing is, if everything were to align exactly right, um, it will be ready tomorrow. If we have to make some tweaks because of the things that have transpired tonight and that, we want to make sure that we've got everything in place just before that, it would be the day after. We would promote it all the way through the weekend. And then we're looking at Monday or Tuesday, depending on whether we get it out Tuesday or Wednesday of this week. Essentially, it'll be out for six, seven days, it'll be out for three days or so for, uh, the applications. Um, and then the applications will close on midnight of that, that third day. So either Wednesday or Thursday of next week.
So while we have Mr. Smith here, then I guess, is there anything else? I see some hands up, is there anything else related to that? Uh, Counselor Harrison?
I just wanted one quick suggestion, um, and that would be on the certification portion, we could add if there is a family relationship, um, to any city council or, or elected officials, they certify there as well on that certification page. And that might help ferry out whether or not we've got any problems.
Yeah, that was my thought in terms of handling it, at least initially, because again, if you provide false information, you're ineligible and so on and so forth. Um, but we'll also do our best to, to try to ferret out if we've got, you know, relationships in there.
Yeah.
I don't know all of your spouses, so I hope they don't slip one by one.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Bida, your hand is up, is, do you have something about firms?
Yes, yeah, I do, just real quick, I'm wondering if we could get like a one-page flyer, executive summary or something of, you know, the, what the program is, what, what you have to do to be eligible, and what you have to do to apply, kind of a one-page summary. So that, um, we could take it out actually, you know, to our, you know, some of our businesses that we know are struggling personally and go take and say, here it is, you know, because they may not be online or we may not have their emails, you know, that kind of thing. I'd like to have something hard copy where I can just walk in and say, hey, you need to know about this.
The answer is yes.
Yes. Real simple.
We can give it to you right now, it's at two pages. And then of course, if there's a Spanish version of it, there'd be two pages there as well. But, uh, yes, the short answer is yes, you can have a hard copy of the program. We think we've got that ready, assuming tweaks that were amended tonight.
That's all I need, thank you.
Great. Okay, so just one thing under general business for me, and that is last week, we kind of started talking about what the future looks like and our stacked agendas and trying to get back to some sort of normalcy, even though this is our mechanism. And so I, I just want to test that and, and see, and it seems like we are ready to keep rolling with things. Um, there's also two requests for council action that we need to bring back out for discussion as well. And, um, we can, we can get those back on, on track as well for, uh, Counselors Bida and Gutwine. Uh, is there any comments about that at this point? Or any questions? Okay. So, and you did hear that we are trying to look at different options for city council chambers. And, you know, things that are, are pressing or things that we're going to need to do. There was mention about CCU and in that there's not anything really happening right now. And so that could probably continue to be pushed, but there are other things that need to start getting back on our agenda moving forward. So keep an eye out for that as we move forward. Council reports, you know, I, I just, I, I have a lot to say, but I'm going to spare the, the folks here and just share that if you're interested in, in kind of some of my thoughts. I put out a letter to the community and, um, uh, I think most important, the best thing that we can do right now is listen. And so I encourage council, if you have any ideas for unique formats as well, to where we can get out in the community and try to, to engage with different folks and different populations, please let me know. I'd love to, to help facilitate that. And then, um, last but certainly not least, again, just a, a big shout out to our city team and all the heavy lifting they've done. Again, continuing to keep us updated daily, working Zoom meetings on the weekends, going to council meetings on the weekends. And then of course, our, our police department that just is working day and night and, and really doing a, a great job. And we appreciate the men and women and the chief. And the one thing about our chief is he will always be honest and candid. And when you hear his words, that's pretty telling. You don't hear that from a lot of other, uh, heads of police organizations. So thank you, Ms. Hodson, for, for the heavy lifting you've done and to the entire team. So that's all that I have. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor, I echo a lot of that, obviously, and I won't rehash what I said earlier. Uh, my, my sentiments from the start of this meeting remain true now. Um, the, I would like to thank the economic development team, uh, and Robert Smith, who did respond, uh, very detailed to a lot of the questions that I know I had, uh, a few days back about all of this. Uh, so I definitely appreciate that and what you and, and Kathy and the rest of the, your, your collective teams and Mr. Cox, what you guys, uh, got hammered out here. Uh, this is going to be a great program for a lot of businesses. So thank you for that. My, uh, main report, I am the, uh, I am your all's representative on the committee that awards the nonprofit grants. And we did do that last week. The committee met and, uh, distributed the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for round one to the nonprofits. So I would like to publicly acknowledge the, uh, committee members as well as everyone, all of the organizations that applied. I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of six hundred thousand dollars or so came in just on this first round. Um, but I believe that, uh, I followed the directive that you all gave me. We did stick very tightly to the directly relating to COVID. A lot of the grants did go to food organizations and folks that are really pushing out direct aid to the community. Um, so thank you to all the applicants and the, uh, committee. So that's all I have, thank you.
Go around my little Brady Bunch box here and go, next to me on mine is Counselor Harrison and then Counselor Franks.
I would just say thank you so much to, um, Mark Johnson and, uh, Community Resource Director Kit Newland for being part of the Ward Five meeting last Sunday, Sunday, Saturday, um, a Zoom meeting. Uh, they took time out of their schedules again, just as Mayor Paul mentioned. Gave really good information about, you know, what the next steps are, had, uh, lots of good questions about that. So I think that it went really, really well. And I just wanted to publicly thank both of them for doing above and beyond. I know, uh, it's really hard to attend all these Zoom meetings on the weekends, but we really appreciate it. So, and most of all, I'd like to thank my technical assistant, um, manager, person who understands the whole thing. Uh, Dana in being able to set it up, get it going, keep it going and make it work. So she is fantastic, uh, thank you so much, Dana.
Counselor Franks?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Um, this coming Saturday, we will have our Ward Four meeting. Um, it will of course be a Zoom meeting at nine thirty AM, and we've got that posted and it went out in our newsletter. Certainly reach out if you don't have that information. Um, also wanted to, uh, give a shout out to city staff. I mean, I, I know we in Ward Four and I know all the, all the councils have been getting an increased number of contacts from our constituents on a variety of topics. Everything from park usage to concerns about masks to police. And, um, really appreciate, um, all the extra work that's gone into very timely responses and, uh, making sure that we have the information we need for our communities. And I know that that's, uh, been additional workload, so we just want to say thank you.
Then I have Counselor Abel and Counselor Bida.
We had a, uh, very good board meeting on, uh, 5G issues. Uh, got a lot of answers, a lot of questions and a lot of input. Uh, uh, our Ben Goldman and Mike, Raimi mentioned earlier, they were outstanding. Um, I think all sides were well represented. And, um, probably the good news for, uh, folks who get bored at our meetings is that we, uh, our next meeting would be on July fourth, but we won't have it this year in July. Thank you. Raimi?
Sorry. No, it's all right, Counselor Bida?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just one comment I'd like to make. I'd like to remind people that, uh, we as counselors, although sometimes folks have the impression that we can or should be able to address and fix all things, all issues related to the city, the fact of the matter is that we, uh, do not, uh, cannot, uh, leap over buildings with a single bound. We, we, our, our authority is very limited by design. That authority is what we're doing right now as we sit here, this is our authority. Soon as the mayor, uh, uh, closes this meeting, adjourns this meeting, we're done, our authority's done. We have no authority on the street. We are not code enforcement officers, we're not police officers. We reach out to the community, try and find out what's going on and talk to them and, and address their issues. But the way we do that is through legislation here, uh, as counselors. And so I just want to remind everybody, and if we don't, and I know we all know this, but I, I want to make sure the public understands that if we step out of our bounds, if we step out of our lane, we, we run the risk of, uh, being personally liable for any problems that creates. So, uh, I, I hope people understand that we have to be very careful about, you know, staying in our lane and, and staying within our authority, which is limited, uh, by design. Thanks.
I have Counselor Gutwine and Counselor Springsteen. Counselor Gutwine?
Uh, no report.
Okay. Counselor Springsteen?
Just a couple of things, um, it continues to concern me every week as constituents text me that they are trying to get in during public comments and are not able to. Every week. Um, I wanted to thank the Lakewood Broadband Task Force who has done so much work on the 5G issue. This effort has grown and grown, they have a hundred and ninety signatures on the petition for the study session, which after six months of begging for it, uh, we are finally apparently going to get. Um, and this task force has done, uh, citizen revisions to the ordinance, uh, have hired their own attorneys, have put countless hours into this. Thank you for being active citizens. Um, and the final thing I want to say is, I want to bring attention to the issues raised by the murder of George Floyd and the many constituent comments that we have had on that issue. Um, issues of discrimination in our society. And we are not outside of that in the city of Lakewood. Um, I want to remember his words, I can't breathe. We need to remember this, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent and Counselor Johnson?
Yes, thank you very much. Robert, uh, Mr. Smith is going to have a busy week. We are going to have a Ward Two meeting on Wednesday evening, it'll be from six to seven thirty. Uh, Economic Development will be there, uh, so Robert Smith and Vanessa Zerott, uh, they will both be there. We have, um, I think some questions in, um, our areas a lot about small businesses. So if anybody has some businesses that want to join, um, that would be great. So, uh, we open it up to everybody, it's six to seven thirty this coming Wednesday. And thank you, Mr. Smith, for agreeing to do that, I appreciate it.
You, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, you know, I wasn't going to get involved in the conversation about, uh, the police department. However, I would really like to thank Chief McCaskey for coming on tonight, for his statement. And also I'd like to thank Kathy for, for her words as well. Uh, we are all hearing all of the national rhetoric. And frankly, for me, it, some of the things that are being said are heartbreaking. And frankly, for me, some of the things that are being said are heartbreaking. We have all gotten some crunchy emails as well. And I guess in some ways, maybe we have not told the public enough about our police department. Kathy, keep me honest here. I think about four, three, four years ago, our school resource officer at Alameda, and I can't recall his name. He helped a young man who wanted to be in some type of marathon and couldn't. And so this SRO pushed his wheelchair so that he could participate. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And he, the agent is a runner as well. I want to say Chavez.
Moose, Moose Chavez.
It is Moose Chavez.
Well, you know, at the time, he received a lot of kudos and then it's since died. But people need to understand those resource officers are ambassadors in the schools. They are diplomats. And I think the students come to them for counseling, for friendship. They're a very important role in our schools. And also, keep me honest, Kathy, haven't we as a city produced about 55 agents that have gone on to other municipalities to become police chiefs?
No, actually, it's more like 72. It might be 72 or 73. So that you under, underrepresented that. And, and by the way, this, it's the student who died. Moose Chavez hasn't died, just to be really clear. The police agent's still alive.
Oh, okay. I, I didn't realize the student had died. I knew that he helped him in that marathon though. Well, obviously, our police department has a standard of excellence that we've got so many agents that are going into other municipalities and becoming chiefs. I think personally, part of that is, and I did not understand it till I went to DC in, in March to the National Conference of State Legislatures. Our department is actually a little bit unusual in that we have agents that have college degrees. And I know myself for a fact, it's not just in criminal justice. Some of them have it in divinity, theology, social work, counseling. They complement one another. And when they're out on the street, those skills really make a difference. Because I've seen that for myself when I've done ride alongs. You know, it wasn't that long ago that council, at least in Wards One and Wards Two, and I'm not sure about the other wards. Every four times a year, we had cops and council. And it got to be a little difficult actually because we were providing food for quite a few people. And when I say that, I mean dinner. But there was really something very good that came of that. The police agents were, were there on a one-on-one basis with people. Folks got acquainted with them. They created friendships with them. I don't know if it's time for us to be looking at that again, but it certainly did play a role that our police agents were out in the community. And that's all I want to say. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Ms. Hodson, anything else or Mr. Cox? Madam Clerk? All right, so we will adjourn the meeting at 10:25 p.m. Thank you all very, very much and we'll see you back here on June 15th for historic preservation updates as well as water in Lakewood. Have a good night.